Call the study session to order. This time, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Luchka?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Plachek?
Here.
Commissioner Alwell?
Here.
Chairman Shotwell?
Here.
Is there any public comment? Any public comment to come before the board? Seeing none, Administrator Overton?
Let's see, first up, Item A is Cascade's champion team. I believe Adam is going to have a presentation for this, or?
Presentation for it, just wanted to update the board and the public that we, the champion team, have received their first donation or grant from the Jackson Community Foundation. For, in the month of November, they're going to match up to $10,000 in contributions. So, the champion team will be working on lining up donation, matched donations for that month, and also looking towards other potential donors that would be willing to match in that month also to leverage those donations. So, it's exciting, it's moving along, and we're exploring a lot of different opportunities. And the chairman is also the chair of that committee, so he probably want to add stuff.
I want to share some exciting news with the committee. I've met with two construction firms here. Number one, the Donegan Brothers Construction of Jackson County, and they've agreed to review the plans and also help us with the complete demo of that wall. And their initial analysis is that we can probably have the wall down and organized in a little bit over two weeks. And all we've got to do now is figure out how to get the debris offsite. And we're putting together a plan. Come spring, we'll be contacting Service Close, which we've begun doing now. We're going to have a community day down there to plant the grass seed, make it so we have a park that, Cascades, that's ready to go for the first wedding that we have scheduled there, according to Becky yesterday, at sometime in late May. So, we do have a pretty good timetable in place, and I want to thank the commissioners for the forethought of setting aside the $140,000 so we can move forward with this project. And I believe, Adam, we're getting close to announcing the firm that's going to help us coordinate it all also, right?
It's in the committee packet going, in next week. So, we're recommending TRC, or, I'm sorry, the Spicer Group, different contracts, the Spicer Group to continue. We had three vendors that submitted proposals for that project.
Any questions?
Our next item of business is Item 5, Medical Care Facility Milage Request. If you recall, the last we spoke of this, I believe, was Human Services Committee last month. At that time, there had been a number of questions raised that were without answer at that point in time. The medical care facility, their board, they had a special meeting on July 24th to basically review and answer any questions that we may have. I know myself, Chairman Shotwell, Commissioner Alexander, and Commissioner Rice were in attendance, among other folks. And we had a nice two-plus hour discussion, of which the minutes, the draft at least of the minutes, are in your packet available for review. I believe they did a good job in answering the questions. For those of you who, well, for the benefit of the audience, I'll say it, let's put it this way. Upon review, myself personally looking at this, I am not inclined to pursue a millage at this time with the MCF. I believe the negatives outweigh, the cons outweigh the pros at this time. I do believe that much more discussion is necessary. I frankly question the amount that's being asked for as well. I think potentially it may need to be more, as opposed to .1. And I'm recommending that this time, we take no action to put it on the ballot, or put the language on the ballot, the ballot language on. However, I would expect or hope that the board would, probably in '15, once the new board's seated and so forth, perhaps develop a committee to look at the millage potential and effort, because I think the real next opportunity, I think, would be 2016, at real, at no cost, that is, if you will, unless you wanted to hold a special election, but everybody knows that special elections cost money. And I think if we start in '15, we'll have plenty of opportunity to really work hard, get all the questions answered, and put something together. So, that's my thoughts at this time.
I'd like to comment on the thought of the ad hoc committee in January with the new board. We've used that very well as a commission, an ad hoc committee to study many different items, whether it be the road commission, to right down to the Cascades Falls. I think it'd be appropriate for us to make sure whoever is seated come January 2nd, that they be challenged with that, and that we present that at the same time and have it available, so they have a full year to put together their millage. And the Board of Commissioners also needs some other answers to some questions that we'd like to know about. You know, if we go for a millage where we roll everything together, can we suspend the current maintenance of effort and not collect it in lieu of, in lieu of a new number? These are some of the different things that need to be asked and answered. We need to make sure that we're not treating the medical care patients differently than we do anyone else in the community, be responsible to them, and look at making sure we have a building that can function again for another 10 or 20 years into the future. I think this Board of Commissioners is up to that challenge. That would be, and I concur with Mike's recommendation. And I know this board will be more than willing, short term, to help the medical care, get that roof straightened out, and get everything around to where the building is in very good shape. And that was their real concern.
Commissioner Alexander?
Thank you. For the record, I would just like it stated that the special meeting minutes of July 24th that are attached in board docs, there are some inaccuracies in the minutes in regard to the individuals that made comments and the attachment to those comments from the individuals that actually stated that. In all respect to Trish, who wrote the minutes, the conversation was rather intense at times. There were 10 voices going, and I think she just did not hear correctly who was making that comment and attaching it to the wrong person. So, in reviewing those minutes, there are inaccuracies. But again, those are that board's meeting minutes, and I just wanted our minutes to reflect that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, there was 10 voices going. Probably seven of them were mine. I do really appreciate the hard work that's been done on this. As everyone know, I did a lot of research on this, and certainly I felt very strongly on this, but I do appreciate the work by the administrator, the chairman, and the medical care facility, and how this has turned out. I believe we're going in the right direction. Separate from that, I'd just like to make two comments in regards to the minutes. And they are very thorough, but number one, if somehow it could be taken out of the minutes, obviously not by us, I was not the one who said they wanted to be quote-unquote "the Taj Mahal." That was not my words. I also was not the one that says, "All people needed was four walls." That's farthest from the truth. I would really like that to be stricken from the minutes as well. So, if somehow maybe Commissioner Alexander or somebody could contact them, and maybe they could change those minutes, I certainly don't want to be on the record for that, because that's not how I believe. Thank you.
With that said, at the next meeting, when they review their minutes to approve, that would be the appropriate time to make those comments and make the change.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly want to say that I appreciate the fact that we're going to look into it for the detail as to what we need to be asking the voters for. I do believe that there is a need, but I think we need to be thorough and not be, you know, piecemealing it together to rush it through and get a no vote from the people because they don't have all the information. I will not be here in 2015, but I will be hopeful that this board or that board that is seated will do the necessary work so that the facility is able to operate and stay as beautiful as it is. We do have a lot of money in there, and we want to maintain it to the best of our abilities. So, I do appreciate the willingness to take a step back at this point so that we can have all the questions answered and have a full amount of time to educate the voters as to the needs and why we need to ask them for a millage. So, thank you very much to the administrator and the chair and the committee who worked hard to get as much information as we have now. But with that, understanding it's still not enough, so I just would like to express my gratitude and also to hope that in the future, we will be able to garner the necessary funds to maintain the building. Thank you.
Commissioner Alwell?
Thank you. I support Mike's plan also, just to leave it for now. It makes sense to make sure that we've got all the bases covered and we're doing the right thing with the finances, make sure we do it right. And that's contingent, of course, as long as we can make sure the most important part, which is the roof over the building, is taken care of. I think that's most important, everybody here anyway. Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yeah, I also concur with Commissioner Alwell and Commissioner Mahoney. On the thoughts, we do need to keep the roof in good repair, otherwise going to have added expenses. But I just didn't feel that they were ready to ask for a millage. They didn't really seem clear on what they needed or what they wanted, and in my view, we kind of saved them by not proceeding ahead till we get it, everything in order. Probably saved the vote. It probably would have been turned down, in my opinion, if it wasn't clear and concise on what they needed and how they were going to spend it. When they come up with that plan and it meets those criteria, I'll support it. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments?
Next item on the agenda, Item 6, Lifeways Agreement. I see we have Gerard, you're going to represent in Lifeways today? Would you like to give us a synopsis of, you know, what the agreement covers? And you don't have to go through the agreement, but why do we have need for the agreement? What are you doing?
Well, good morning. I'm Gerard Soraki, the CFO from Lifeways. Interesting question, and Brad asked that same question this morning, and I gave him the answer that it's the rules of conduct for being a good neighbor. And I really wasn't joking, it is. We are, as you know, Lifeways owns that building, which is two parcels, the north and south parcel. The south parcel is what we call our for-profit, we define it as the for-profit entity, and the north side is the non-profit side. But over the years, the for-profit side just didn't fare well financially for Lifeways, and the opportunity about a year ago came about to sell that parcel. And the prospective buyer is here in the audience as well. The reason the shared service agreement is being consummated and probably needed is because it is one building, there is a common wall, firewall, I guess, is one way to describe it, because the traffic flow is such that you're going between two parcels. At one time, it was all owned by Lifeways. Now, potentially, there will be a new neighbor. So, there's reasons to have rules. And bottom line, that's kind of what's going on, and that applies to everything from top to bottom, meaning roof, parking, the electrical, for example, the utilities are all pretty much one utility. So, those need to be separated, and just a host of other sundry tasks that need to be done in order to really keep the parcels as separate as possible, even though it's one building. So, that's pretty much my description of the shared service agreement and why it's needed. The reason the county is involved, of course, the county billing authority is the, technically still owns the building, the billing authority leased it to the county, who leased it to us. So, therefore, the need to keep all parties informed as to what's going on, and in agreement as to what's going on. So, bottom line, we hopefully will get your support on this potential sale and agreement and move forward. It's in Lifeways' best interest, I feel, and I know our board does, and a couple board members here, they can speak to that. So, it's hopefully a good thing for both parties, the buyer and seller.
I'll just add a couple items here. In your package, you have a memo from our attorney who worked on this agreement on behalf of the county. Couple things I would point out here, the utilities, of course, they have 18 months to separate. At close, there'll be money's escrowed to pay for that separation of utilities. So, it's not like down the road, they have to fight about who's going to pay for what. It's all in there. And the agreement may be terminated within 90 days, north-south portions of it. And they have reciprocal easement will be created for the benefit of the owners' documents. Okay, north-south. The parties will share the use and cost of repairs and maintenance of the parking area. Again, spelled it out, they try to be as thorough as possible. And I do believe that this is in Lifeways' best interest and the best interest of the county ultimately, given that we provide a substantial share of funding there. Adam, you have anything to add for this?
On Wednesday, we were working to resolve some last remaining issues, and the, I see that Mr. Curtis, our attorney, sent a final copy to us yesterday, so I'm indicating that those issues have been resolved, so.
Agreed.
Should be in the packet to go through the normal board process.
Yeah, I know Rick has been intimately involved in this, and of course, he's on vacation, so that's where we're kind of pitching a little here. Questions, anyone?
Excuse me, it's not so much a question, just like to make a comment as a county commissioner and also on the Lifeway board. And I have had conversations with Fleet and Director Rick Shealy about this, and just from everything I've read and the conversations I've had with both sides of this, from my perspective, I support this, just to let you know.
Mr. Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and also, as the other board member for Lifeways, I concur with what Commissioner Rice has said regarding the agreement, and we do appreciate the county's support.
All right, if there's no other questions, I've been told that they are looking to close on this agreement before the end of the month, so this can follow our standard practice of going through our committee and moving on. Is that what the expectation is? Okay, good. Moving on to the next item then. Number seven, the audit, comprehensive audit review. I believe we have, I'm not sure of the gentleman's name, Jim?
Hello. My name is Nate Baldorman. I'm a principal at Raymond, have been with Raymond for a lot of years, 18 years. And welcome back the opportunity to be in front of you presenting this morning. The audit, I'm just going to try to go through it as quickly as possible, just to give you some highlights of the audit, and just talk a little bit about the process and everything that we've gone through. The audit was completed at the end of July, and yes, it was, it was late this year. We had a very big push at the end of the audit, trying to get it done. A lot of information was coming in at the end, actually, the medical care facility report. We received finals on that report on June 30th, just before 5:00. That was one of the difficulties, and part of the difficulties there was the actuarial reports that were needed for the medical care facility and working with the auditors. The auditors didn't get those, and the medical care facility didn't get those, that information until like a week or two before the audit was due. So, that was one of the main reasons, and then there were also some delays, honestly, on the finance side of getting information. A lot of the information was coming in at the end. We pushed hard, but it just couldn't get done. So, we trust that with, you know, a renewed push and everything in future years, and we hope to be back in future years, that we would be able to resolve that and get the audit done in good timing. Interestingly, there's a proposal out at the state that actually is looking at moving that deadline up from a six-month deadline to 150 days. So, approximately the end of May is what they're looking for potentially in the future. They've already moved that forward for school districts. They're actually due November 15th, they're moving that up to October 15th, starting next year. So, I wouldn't be surprised if this passes. It's just a Senate bill right now, but they're looking at potentially moving that forward as well, so make things even more difficult. So, the only plus is we'd be done, we'd be pushing for a deadline at the end of May instead of the end of June, and the summer would be a little bit more free at the beginning of summer. So, you should have received all copy of the financial statements, the CAFR. It's almost a 200-page document, I will not go through it in detail. Did want to point out, the opinion, and actually, we do assist the county in preparing the CAFR. However, technically, the only piece of it that's truly ours is the opinion, which is, starts on page 11. Basically, you know, that opinion is considered to be a clean opinion. They changed the terminology a little bit a couple years ago. We now call it an unmodified opinion, which means basically what you're getting what you're looking for, which is the fact that the financial statements, in our opinion, are reasonably stated in all material facts. And the way I like to put it is, you can rely on this information to make decisions. That's really what you're trying to get to. I would also point out, for the general fund, at the end of the year, when all was said and done, the fund balance ended up at 12.6 million, which was a decrease of about 2.8 million from the prior year. One of the main reasons for that decrease that you'll see is actually, it's somewhat of an accounting issue. The investments of the county are required to be reported at fair value, and because of that, there can be some, sometimes some items that the fair value is less, even though the county treasurer might expect to keep those investments until maturity. It's still required under accounting standards for those amounts to be written down because of changes in interest rates, that type of thing. So, you showed like a $2 million loss on your investments this year, but that's not an actual realized loss where you're going to end up losing that money. It's just an accounting treatment, the way the standards are written now. One of the other big things this year that changed, if you happen to have the report, it shows on page 44, is the resource recovery facility. Sorry, the CAFR, the large document. Yep.
Page?
Page 44. Okay. So, it's going to be close to page 44 of the PDF, probably add about seven or eight pages to that. It's the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund net position for your proprietary funds. But this statement is, where I'm trying to point out is the resource recovery facility. Because of the closure of that facility and everything that happened with that, there was an impairment of the assets. Basically, they're not worth what they were because the facility can't operate for that function anymore. As a result of that, under accounting standards, those had to be written down, as well as the inventory, which management made an estimate of what the remaining scrap value of that inventory was. So, there was a write-down of 11.5 million for that, for the loss on the capital assets, and then a 1.6 million loss on the write-down of the inventory, which brought down the value, or the net position of that fund to 1.1 million. Most of that was already taken up, and when you segregate your net position on the balance sheet, it's segregated between amounts invested in capital assets, restricted and unrestricted. So, it all affected that, or mostly affected that, invested in capital assets. Again, it's not a loss where you end up having to pay anything back, but basically, the facility is no longer operating as is, so it had to be written down. The other thing that I wanted to point to, part of it is with some upcoming changes in standards, some things that you'll see changing in the near future. Actually, next year, we'll start with the footnote disclosures. It's on page 79 of the report, is your pension footnote. And right now, this pension footnote only takes up slightly less than two pages. Next year, you probably will expect about 10 pages. That's my guess. We haven't had any put together yet, but beginning with next fiscal year, you will be required for a lot more disclosures, which will lead up to the year after next. You will be reporting the liabilities for your unfunded portion of the pensions on your balance sheet. It'll be on the government-wide financial statements, it won't end up showing up in your funds, but it will be a major change. If you, kind of on the middle of page 80, up towards the stop, the funding status of the plan, your unfunded liability as of December 31st, 13, the actuarial date, that liability was 53 million. Now, the standards are a little bit different, the actuarial, the way the actuary, actuarial report is put together will be a little bit different, so that number won't be exact, but it kind of gives you an idea of what kind of number will be thrown on those government-wide financial statements. And that is a change. It only affects the pensions for now, but your other post-employment benefit plans, your retiree healthcare, that will be coming. They have exposure drafts out on that, and that'll probably be coming two, three years later, where those disclosures will change, and those amounts will go on your balance sheet. So, just something to look for. You know, it's, they're ever-changing, wanting to change the standards, they can't leave standards alone for very long. There's some logic behind it of saying you have this liability, it's never shown up on your balance sheet anywhere, but then there's other people that are, they're saying that number can be so huge, it will make a statement that some believe is not worth much as it is, make it even worth less because you'll be overwhelmed by that liability at a lot of places. But if you go to page 90, this is the required supplementary information for, that's for the, gives you some historical information on that schedule of funding, the schedule of funding progress, which gives you some historical information on that unfunded liability. And you'd see there, over the last six years, that unfunded portion has gone from about just under 8 million to where it's about 53 million now. So... That was all I really wanted to highlight in the comprehensive annual financial report. Any questions or anything else anybody wanted to highlight? Any questions or anything else anybody wanted to highlight? Okay. The second part of our audit, there's really two pieces to our audit. The first piece is the financial audit, looking at the financial statements and looking at this report. The second part of it is, because the county expends over $500,000 in federal awards, you're required to have a federal single audit. And as a part of that, we go through a risk assessment process, determine what grants and what programs are required to be looked at, or that we need to look at, and then we do our testing, and then we're required to issue findings, that type of thing. This report, the single audit report, is also where we report our findings on the financial audit as well. So if you go, this is the much smaller report, the Single Audit Act Compliance Report. If you go to page 5 on that report, you can see, actually starts on page 3, pages 3 through 5, lists all the grants that the county receives. The county receives a wide variety of grants, but the total for this year was 6.7 million, almost 6.7 million. If you want to see a summary of the results of the audit, I always like to skip back our very verbose reports to go, if you go to page 15 of the report, it's actually, a summary of the auditor's results is included, that kind of spells it out a little bit more clearly of what the results are. Go ahead.
As far as a percentage of our money received for grants, how do we compare to other counties? Can you tell? Are we right in there where we ought to be, or?
You seem to be, yes. I mean, different counties, you know, some counties have different programs that they run, as opposed to having some different, I'm trying to think of some good examples, like there's workforce investment grants. Some counties receive that money, those monies directly, and then they spend those, and some places have other entities that run those programs as well. So it can go back and forth, but it's, you know, in terms of what's in the community and stuff, it seems in line with the other places that we audit.
Thank you.
But then on page 15, it summarizes first on the financial statement audit, you know, what type of auditor's report was issued, was unmodified. Again, like you talked about before, that's what you're looking for in an audit. As a part of the audit, we also look at internal controls. Now, the reason we're looking at internal controls isn't to give you an opinion on the controls, whether we think they're right or not. We're looking at internal controls so that we can plan our audit appropriately in accordance with standards, and if things come to our attention during that planning and during that risk assessment process, we're required, if it meets certain criteria, to report those. We did have two material weaknesses this year that I'll go over in a minute, and so those items were required to be reported. There were no significant deficiencies, and then also, as a part of a financial statement audit, under government auditing standards, we're required to also look at compliance, not just compliance on the federal side, which the rest of this is going to talk about, but also if you had any state grants, contracts, that type of thing, if there was any non-compliance that would materially impact the financial statements, we'd also have to report that. And there was none of that this year. On the federal awards side, it's kind of the same deal. We're looking at each program to give you an opinion on the compliance of the program, but then we're also looking at the internal controls as a part of that process, and if things come to our attention on the controls, again, we're also required to report that. It's a lot more stringent also on the single audit when we find stuff. I mean, it's basically, if it made its way into the requirements, into what the compliance supplement is that we look at, then we're required to report that information. So it tends to be a little bit lower threshold in terms of what gets reported, so sometimes you have more, end up finding more on the single audit side. The programs that we tested this year, we do have material weaknesses and significant deficiencies this year. If you look towards the bottom of the page, the programs that we looked at this year were the Community Development Block Grant, the NSP 3 program, the Brownfields Assessment and Cleanup Cooperative Agreements Program, the Aging Cluster. We also looked at those programs, as well as the Child Support Enforcement Program. And then the one thing to point out, other thing to point out, the audit qualified as a low-risk audit. This actually has nothing to do with what happened this year. It's a look back at the last two years to determine, based on what findings and whether reports were qualified, that kind of thing, determines whether or not you're considered to be low-risk. And you're not considered to be low-risk because of findings that were there in the prior years. And what that means today is basically, if you were considered to be low-risk, as auditors, we'd only have to get coverage. After we do all the risk assessment, we have to look at it, and as long as the programs we selected covered at least 25% of the programs, we would be done. Now, because you're not low-risk, we have to cover at least 50% of the expenditures in our single audit. For the financial statement side of things, if you start on page 16, page 16 and 17 are the findings that we had this year for the audit. 16 is related to the preparation of the financial statements and just some general accounting issues. Much of this stems from the preparedness, how late a lot of the things were ready, and how long it took the financial statements, or took for the trial balance to be ready, for all the support for different amounts to be included. And so because of that delay, significant delay that we feel, as well as some of the work that we had to do to get there, that's where the material weakness comes from. And then the second one has to do with the schedule of federal awards, that I was pointing out before. That report is considered to be a financial statement, and so we have to look at that in two different regards. One, on the single audit, there's actually a finding on this in the single audit section, as well as the financial section. There was approximately 747,000 that was missing from that report when we initially received it. There was some work that we did that uncovered. It's not that it was completely uncovered. You knew the money was there, it just was misclassified and hadn't been pulled in. The reason that it's also in the single audit report is that two of the programs we tested as major were as a result of that extra money. If that extra money, if we wouldn't have found that other money, we actually wouldn't have tested those programs as major because the dollar amounts that were there were less than the required amounts to go through the risk assessment process. So that was the, actually, the Brownfield Grant and the CDVG Grant. And both of those were the result of either misclassifications on the statements, something might have been called state versus federal in the reports, and also there was a grant for the Brownfield that's accounted for, that's not on the county's books, it's a part of the Brownfield, it's accounted for separately, that they weren't aware of the relationship with that money. And some of that gets passed through to different entities, so there can be some confusion there in terms of who's responsible and how it shows up.
Is that the Brooklyn issue with the Brownfield Authority?
The Brooklyn?
Yeah, I don't think so, no.
Is it the?
It's really an issue with the city, the one of you.
It's with the city?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, most of the money for the Brownfield is passed through to the city, but it also has to show up on your books because you receive it and then you have responsibilities, which actually kind of leads into the next finding, the first finding in terms of subrecipient monitoring.
So who didn't have the correct controls in place for this? Was it us, or was it the city, or was it just definitions of where the money went?
I would say it would be the county's. Controls would have to be such so that it would make sure that it shows up on the financial, it shows up on the schedule of federal awards. So it's the county's, and part of it is, you know, where we start finding issues like this is generally when things aren't centralized, where you don't have, and I know this isn't possible in all cases, but when you don't have a centralized process for accepting grants, receiving grants, having one person in control of that and preparing the SEFA at the same time, so that they know that all of these things, what's going through, and make sure that things are classified properly, that kind of thing. So.
This is that special money that was given to the Jackson County Brownfield Authority to be passed through for the city, for the haze, or the Consumers Project, correct?
Correct.
And it's not that the money's missing, it was misdefinitioned.
Correct, correct. It wasn't.
The money of 750,000, it disappeared.
No, no. It just didn't show up on the schedule, so initially, we weren't assessing it and including it in our single audit, which it did end up getting included in the single audit in the
If I may, one of the challenges, and he hit the nail on the head there, is, one, we receive lots of grants, two, they're spread out, they're all over the place, and as he said, we don't have any centralized authority review, so it's a whole lot of different people reviewing. At the end of the day, though, it all comes back to the audit and the responsibility, you know, here, but there's a whole lot of fingers in there, and we need to work on that, is what they're basically saying.
I appreciate that, but when we received this money, we didn't request the money from the federal government. It showed up here, okay? And that was part of the issues we were having with the money, both NSP 3 and with the Consumers Energy Building Project.
It was a question more for you, Mike. Would it make sense to have more of a central person to take care of all grants for the county?
Yes. The challenge is finding the FTEs, finding the money to pay someone to do that kind of work, but, you know, we'll talk more about that because he's got a number of things that basically are the same kind of issues, let's put it that way.
Right. I assume if he continues, the, most of the issues with respect to the grants, the two grants, the two grants are pass-throughs, so again, there's confusion as to who is responsible for doing what, and that's the Brownfield NSP 3 Grant. And just to explain, the issue of consolidating the responsibility is that our frustration is in obtaining the information from certain departments in order to prepare the SEFA. However, the error in question really is our responsibility. I'll take responsibility for that, and that's why in my response, I said it was inadvertent omission, which is true, inadvertent misclassification on county's books with respect to NSP 3. The frustration, though, with Brownfield is the Brownfield accounting is done by the Economic Development Corporation. So again, we don't obtain that information other than after the fact. So one thing we can do there is make sure we get that information on a timely basis, so we can avoid this. Thank you.
Community Action Agency is NSP 3, right?
NSP 3, yes. Brownfield Development Authority owes the Economic Development Corporation.
Right, well, that was the point, was there's, it's not only just internal, there's outside agencies, Community Action Agency, EDC, and others. No excuse, but, you know, there are those kind of extenuating circumstances. He's got a number of things he wants to talk about, let's move forward, and Jim, in the end, I would hope that we can maybe address some of these, come on up and address them, rather than take them piecemeal, if that's okay with the board.
All right, the first, the first single audit finding, federal award finding, is on subrecipient monitoring, and it ties right into what we were just talking about. There's a number of things that when you get money and you pass it through to somebody else, whether it's to CAA, or to the city, or whoever else it is, you have responsibilities under the standard, or under the federal requirements to monitor those. There's requirements to let them know what federal program they're under. There's a responsibility to make sure the amounts reconcile, what they're reporting in their single audits is reconciling back to what you have, what you're showing in your records. You're responsible for reviewing those reports. You know, if the city has a single audit done, you need to, somebody at the county needs to review that single audit. If there's any findings, they need to follow up on those findings. And then also, there's some other requirements in terms of, you know, reporting things and reporting different requirements to them. And there's a risk assessment process that the county is also supposed to do to be able to say what during the award monitoring needs to happen, you know, whether it's just looking at reimbursement requests because they send you enough detail, if there's eligibility requirements, if there's any other requirements that are with that, you know, and there's a lot of requirements that they have to follow, you have to make sure that they're following those as well and having processes in place to do that. It's not, you know, it doesn't have to be the depths of a single audit of what we would do going in, looking at things, but there's got to be something done to review that. There were some things lacking in that process for those, for these two grants that we were just talking about, and so our recommendation is that that be looked at and make sure that all of those compliance requirements are met in the future.
If those federal funds are on our schedule, and they're also included in the city audit, if it goes to the city, does that report, then that money is reported twice in this county, correct?
Correct. It gets reported in both places.
So is it that they should have done an audit and forwarded to us since we initially passed through the money to them, and they should have audited and forwarded that audit to us so that we could have had a proper accounting of it?
Correct.
Is that what the normal process is?
Right, and somebody here should be reviewing it, and, you know, part of what we have to look at is that we have to look at evidence that these things took place.
Okay.
So there may have even been some things where something may have happened, like communicating the CFDA number to the city. That probably happened, it showed up right on their statements, but there's no evidence anywhere that that happened. So, you know, we also have to look at, in our standards, we have to look to make sure that there's some kind of documentation that things are happening, so. The next finding, finding two on page 20, relates to reporting. There's different reporting requirements in both of these grants, and there's some reports that either weren't being prepared, and again, they're looking at specific requirements. You know, there are some of that reporting that's special to the Section 1512 reporting, which is a requirement of the ERA grants only, the Recovery Act monies. You know, that you won't have to worry about for too much longer because that money is about gone and dried up, but those other reports is just making sure that you're aware of the reports that need to be filed and that they're being filed properly. Finding three relates to documentation of personnel costs. Under current federal requirements, it's very specific on how you have to document costs, or document payroll costs. Basically, you have two options. One, if somebody is 100% funded, the current requirements allow you to do a semi-annual certification. If not, if you're being funded, or if somebody is spending their time on multiple things, it's not based on funding, it's based on what the particular objectives that the person is working on and the cost centers that they're working in. If they work on more than one, they're required to complete timesheets or personal activity reports is what they're called, they're completed on a least monthly basis, they're an after-the-fact determination, and that accounts for 100% of their time. And the way that we looked at these grants, the way that the processes are working in the aging program, it didn't quite meet all of those requirements, and so our recommendation here is that the standards, or that the processes be updated to make sure they comply. One note on that is that as it's being looked at, it should also be looked at that there's some changes coming in the requirements for that as well. We pointed out a little bit in our management letter, have a brief synopsis of it, but basically, there was a new, they're calling it all kinds of different things, the Super there was a new, they're calling it all kinds of different things, the super circular or whatever, but the federal guidelines were all consolidated recently, and they take effect basically starting next year. So those new guidelines will, they're actually not quite as tight and name things specifically, like I said, in terms of the personal activity reports, but the concepts are still going to be there. So it's going to need to be looked at in the future to make sure that, yes, it complies with what here, because right now, that needs to be complied with, but also in the future that it's going to meet those requirements. I would suspect if you meet the current requirements, it should meet the requirements in the future as well, so.
Just for clarification, so I'm clear, are you saying that the, they didn't fill out the form after the fact, or they didn't account for it separately, or?
Part of what it is, is it's a pre-filled-out form that has percentages, it doesn't account for 100% of their time, so it's not, and these are part-time people, so their job duties could change throughout the weeks, that kind of stuff, and what's happening is the managers are looking, at least at a quarterly basis, reviewing those percentages to see if they need to be adjusted, that type of thing. You know, it's hard on this type of a program, we have to write it up because of what it is. I have no doubt on the aging cluster that these things are being covered. I mean, you have so much more money that goes into these programs that are non-federal that help cover this, these costs, that, you know, the likelihood of there being any issue is very minimal, but it's just following it to that, the requirements to a T, you know, can cause some problems, so.
So the form that spells out the percentages of time did not add up to 100, is that what you're saying?
No, it adds up, it adds up to 100, but it's, again, it's not, with these types of forms, when you have the percentages and that type of thing, and you're doing it pre-filled-out and only reviewing it after a period of time, is you have that risk that that's not, I'm trying to think of how to say it, so if somebody's working.
You're saying that it's not accurate, potentially?
Correct.
Okay. Did you find that it wasn't accurate, is that what you tested for, or you found that it was just reviewed too far after the fact to be reliable?
Reviewed too far after the fact, the fact that it was only quarterly.
Okay. So we can increase the frequency and probably resolve that issue?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
The next finding, segregation of ERA and non-ARA expenditures, is very specific to that Brownfield grant that has the monies that are being passed through. There's just a specific requirement in the standards with these monies that they have to be, on the general ledger, have to be separated. The way that they were in the general ledger, it was all grouped together, and those amounts, I mean, we could identify them, but we had to go through each one and say, yeah, this one ties out to the reimbursement request, and it wasn't, so it wasn't segregated the way it was required to be. And then the last finding, we've kind of already talked about, number five, related to, or that's not the last one, the next last one, probably identifying federal expenditures, this goes back to the whole idea that those amounts weren't included on the Schedule of Federal Awards for the Brownfield and the NSP 3. No, they just weren't, it's the same thing, they weren't included. This is the single audit piece of it, though, because it's, because those were major programs, it's an issue. The last finding relates to, again, those two same grants, the NSP 3 and the Brownfield.
I need to go back.
Okay. Yes. In terms of whether it should have been on the schedule of federal awards?
Yeah.
It should be that management has controls and processes in place to make sure that it's included of the county. So they, so we were given a schedule and said it was complete, and then there were other things, when we started looking into the numbers, we said, well, what about these amounts here? And initially, I think it was, it was thought that that amount might not, or wasn't required to be put on the schedule. A lot of times the federal agencies, they're looking specifically at the compliance, they're looking at, they won't necessarily look in depth to see the single audit. I mean, sometimes they overlook that, you know, because it is something that I think, and I've talked to Jim about this some, there may be a need to look at last year to see whether that, those amounts were excluded last year and whether you need to refile the single audit for last year. But all I know is because of the way it was defined, it needed to be on here and it wasn't.
So the bottom line is, it needed to be on the schedule and it was not listed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The last finding is on procurement suspension and department. This is one of those findings that I'm hoping goes away. They haven't come out with the new, I was talking about the uniform guidelines that they, that they just put out recently. They don't have the new compliance supplements out, which will tell us what the compliance areas are, but one of the compliance areas is suspension department, and I end up writing this up a lot, and it's one of those where the non-compliance isn't the fact that you contracted with somebody who's suspended or barred. The requirement is that you check, that you either put something in a contract, or you put something in your, or you get some kind of certification back for them, or you go out to this website, sam.gov, and double-check it. There's no evidence that that happened on certain vendors and sub- recipients, so we have to write it up as non-compliance because that part didn't happen. We went out and checked ourselves and saw that they weren't there, but the requirements of the standards right now, of the federal requirements, say that we have to do that. So that's what this finding is, is the fact that that check didn't happen beforehand, and that check is just to make sure that you don't do it, you need to have it beforehand to make sure that you're not contracting with somebody that's, the federal government is deemed to be not worthy of their money. That was all on the single audit. And I'd just point out on this, this separate letter that we have, this is our communication with those charged with governance. There's a number of standard things that we include in that letter, these are just things that the standards require we communicate to you. Just to highlight a couple of things, on the second page, under significant accounting policies, we talk about, there's some more detailed discussion of the significant items that came up, specifically the write-down of assets related to the Resource Recovery On page three, the significant encounters, difficulties encountered during the audit, which is about the middle of the page, we talk about this, delays in the issuance of the financial statements, and give a brief reason as to why that happened. But the rest of it is kind of standard language. Attachment A is comments and recommendations. You know, I talked about in the single audit, those things that were significant deficiencies, material weaknesses. There are certain things that come up that don't raise to that level, that they're not that significant, just things that we point out, some things that we think could strengthen internal controls. So those things are listed, I don't, you know, because of time, that kind of thing, I don't need to go in those in detail unless you have specific questions. The other thing we do is we attach management's representations, that's a new, fairly new requirement, where we're required to report to you what management represented to us. So that letter is included. Included is attachment to that letter, there were a couple of unposted adjustments. Again, they're not considered to be significant. We, you know, management and ourselves looked at these and determined that they weren't significant, and a decision was made not to post. So, again, very small things, but we're required to report those things out over, that aren't considered to be trivial. And then the last piece we have, attachment C, is upcoming changes in accounting standards, and it just kind of gives you a brief summary of each of the new standards that are out there, starting with Gatsby 66. Already highlighted a little bit, Gatsby 67 and 68, which are going to be effective for 14 and 15. And then the very last thing on the last page is talking about that uniform guidance for federal awards that I was talking about with the single audit, so. That was all I had to cover.
Thank you. Jim, you want to come up just for a second and share some thoughts on the audit and what can we do different to correct this and so forth?
Yeah, to respond to the single audit findings, again, most of these have to do with the two grants that are pass-throughs, and lack of understanding as to what's required, number one. Number two, determining who is responsible for what, in other words, is the sub-recipient responsible for filing certain reports and so forth. The Brownfield grant, one of the issues there is that that's not on our books directly, you know, it's the EDC has their own accounting for that, and we obtain that after the fact. So one solution would be that we will look at that, at least on a quarterly basis, we will obtain that information and perhaps summarize it on our books. And it's appropriate that anything that really is county responsibility should be on our general ledger, and that's an example where it's not. With respect to grants in general, most of the grants are handled through the Health Department and Department of Aging, but it's all of these other grants that are spread throughout the county that are causing me the concern and so forth. So I would propose that we further centralize the reporting requirements there, in other words, we better coordinate with those individuals that are responsible for filing the reports of the individual grants and so forth. Also, the solution to timeliness is that, and I've expressed this in the past, is that I would like a normal year with a full staff. Again, I had staff turnover during 2013, the replacement was not hired until February of 2014. So, and if the staff, if there's staff continuity in the future years, the pace of the work and the timeliness issue should be alleviated. I also would like to point out, one positive issue is that the last page of the single audit report shows the status of prior year findings, and prior year, there was eight of them, and only two of those are repeated, so just to try to, try to put a positive spin on that. With respect to the, it's called the SAS letter, SAS letter, that, which was other manners that were communicated to you, I'd like to respond to a couple of things there. The completion of the bank reconciliations, again, we were behind on that, however, as of today, we are reconciling July, so we are now brought up current with respect to the bank reconciliations, and that's due to the efforts of new staff that I have. Some of the other findings we see here will change with the implementation of our new financial accounting software. When BSNA is implemented, then there'll be a different way of looking at claims payable, for example, and so forth. There was one finding, I'm skipping some of those, that the backup of the financial data system, our old IFAS system apparently has been backed up, but there's no way to test it, which is kind of scary. And also, we have to, according to IT Director, we have to rely upon an outside vendor to restore it, which would be a one-to-two day process. Fortunately, we haven't had any issues with that. Again, with BSNA, that is on a new server, and there'll be proper backup procedures so that we, I mean, this really kind of scares me as well, in a sense of something went wrong, how would we restore the records? And it might be difficult. So, in any event, that's a brief overview of any responses, and we'll have some detailed procedures and initiatives to alleviate the issues.
Thank you, Jim. One thing I would just comment to, and then, you have a question? Go ahead.
Is there anything in here that's a repeat of negative findings from last year that was repeated again this year?
Yes, there's two things. One is the timeliness of the report to the state. Last year, we submitted the report July 31st, that's repeated. And let me see here, there's one other one that was repeated as well, but of the eight items, there's that one. Oh, and then there's, each year, we have cases where we exceed the budget. In other words, and again, explained this in past years, if we have a tight budget and there's no cushion in the budgets, then there can be a tendency to spend more than what's in the budget. And so last year, we wrote, we got a wrote it for that, and again, that's repeated as well. And that does require further review on our part to make sure that that doesn't happen, but in some cases, that's out of our control. In other words, we don't always anticipate expenditures.
But that could be corrected by a simple budget adjustment before the end of the budget year, or not?
Yes, that's correct. To the extent we know all the facts, in some cases, and again, it may be that we can get this information, but we had, for example, medical care facility maintenance of effort expense, we are billed by the state in February, so we don't always know what that is, although I'm told now, there's a way to get that information, that there's monthly reports on that, so we can anticipate that, for example, and eliminate, eliminate the excess expenditure over budget.
If I may jump in here, Jim, the budget item that went over, budget line item I'm talking about here, it was Parks and Rec, wasn't it? Wasn't it, it was like $2,400 or something?
That was a different issue. There was, and there was correspondence from the state on this, the unrestricted fund balance for the Parks Fund was negative, or had a deficit of $2,900. However, the total fund balance is positive, and the reason that occurred is because we have $50,000 tied up in inventory, and so the inventory is non-spendable, you already spent the money, it's tied up there. I've sent back correspondence to the state asking for clarification as to, is this truly a deficit or not in this case? And I haven't heard back, so.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to point to the board, it's not like hundreds of thousands, it's a very small number, and there is some question about it. And of course, just the fact that we're late is the second finding there on that. Although, Jim, you did say something that struck my chord with me. You said you'd like to have a year when you had full staff. In all honesty, turnover is a natural part of our operation. People, you know, find other opportunities and so forth, and that's part of the challenge we have when you, as everybody here knows, we have continually reduced staff, we've continually, you know, fine-tuned it, if you will, to where we don't have the depth that we once had in many departments. So if you do have turnover, the impact is greater because you don't have someone else to help pick up the ball and run with it, so you limp along as best you can and try to fill the position as fast as you can, of course. So not to make excuses, but we're going to have to deal with this, Jim, somehow, because turnover is a part of life, so it may be that we've cut too much, I'm not sure, you know, obviously, we have to look at that. I know we've had some issues in other departments, similar issues, I should say, with turnover, but anyway, thank you.
Yeah, related to that comment, also is, not only is there the issue of turnover, but also the issue of the training of individuals. For example, there's the issue that came up on the federal schedule, and again, I take responsibility for that because I should have detected that, but my staff wouldn't necessarily be knowledgeable to detect that. But over time, they should be. And so the answer to turnover really is, is continuity, the longer people stay, the better it is, number one, and number two, cross-training of responsibility. But again, you have to have the people there. But again, you have to have the people there to cross-strain. So, again, I look forward to, the staff I have are excellent, and so I look forward to increasing our capabilities through training and so forth.
Thank you, Jim. If nothing else, we'll move on to the next item, which I think Adam has a couple slides on this one, and we frankly, might, we expect this will help us in the finance area.
This goes right along with some of the challenges addressing the audit and the budget, and this is a solution we have for you today. Hopefully, we'll see the wisdom that we see in it. So currently, we pass the budget six months ahead of time, prior to the end of the year. So in June, you pass the 2015 budget, which will begin in January, and that's really at your discretion. You only have to approve it prior to December thirty-first, before the year starts. At the same time, we do the county audit between January and June. However, that's not really at your discretion. That's based on the year-end of January one and has to be completed by June thirtieth of that year. So visually, we have the budget, and then we've got the audit right on top of each other, which strains the finance staff that we have. And what we're proposing is that we just move the budget process to the fall, back where most governments do it. However, we know that this board has enjoyed doing it budgets in advance and long-term thinking, long-term planning. So what we're proposing is that we do it in the fall, but we do a two-year budget. And it's really just a natural progression of where we've been and where we're going. And this is a growing trend in local governments. Not a lot of them are doing it yet, but this is where a lot of them are moving to two- or three-year rolling budgets. This is not a biannual budget that some states do. The state that I previously lived in, they did a biannual budget every other year they approved a budget, and you do amendments in between. But what we're talking about is still approving a budget every year, and so what's known as rolling multi-year budgets. So you'd pass a year, pass a budget for two successive years, and then each year, you're updating the second year finding from the previous year. So what that means for us is that we would go into a budget process immediately this fall for 2016 to add 2016 to the currently adopted 2015 budget. And then in the fall of 2015, we'd work on a 2016, 2017 budget. So we see this as one of the solutions for evening out the workload on the finance department. And for us, it's a big project either way. It doesn't really make a difference to my cry whether it's in the fall or spring, it's still an interruption in what our normal function is, but it has to be done. But for the finance staff, this should be a benefit, where Jim's not trying to track down items for the audit staff that's here, and then at the same time, plug in numbers as we go over budget submissions from departments. So that's really all we had for you. We're just looking for a head nod from the board to give us the thoughts to go forward with a two-year rolling budget. Which means something would come for you likely, and you'd have to approve it at the December meeting. Well, you wouldn't have to, but, because we already have a fifteen approved, but that's what we'd be shooting for is December to approve a 2015-16 budget. Anything to add, Mike?
Sounds like a good next step in the financial planning for the county, to me. Instead of being just a year, you know, six months ahead will be eighteen months ahead. Better planning, better, and it's not like, it's just like we are now. If something big happens, we can adjust the 2015 budget before it starts, and this will give us another long-term planning tool.
What it also means is that when you see budget adjustments, it will become more common that you see two years adjusted. If it's just the one-time expense, it may just be that year, but if you're talking about structural issues that will proceed to the next year, then you'll see adjustment for fifteen and then sixteen, or sixteen, seventeen. So that'll be something you'll see more frequently if we go this route.
Commissioner Howell. One of the huge benefits that we've got that I see is the team that's put together to calculator, I guess use their crystal ball on what the revenue is going to be for the upcoming year. How do you see that playing into this process? Isn't it going, and that's such a huge part of our successful budgets, I think, is the team estimating what the revenue is. How do you see that impacting a two-year process?
Well, this, we'll probably improve that a little bit, because typically, we're working in December to try to, we start that revenue committee in December and conclude in January to project the fifteen year. So by, if we're waiting, we would then start that committee in June, which we would have the equalization numbers by then and have a pretty good, even a better feel for that fifteen year, that next, the upcoming year. We will have already done a projection for that year, but it would have to be updated in the June meeting.
Are you doing that right now as well, I think, correct? As far as estimating a second year out?
We do, yes, on paper. It's not, we actually throw out five years, but it's not as much emphasis is given on the years two through five as in the first year, of course.
And how accurate have you found that second year out typically that you're estimating?
That's a good question. We really haven't benchmarked to see how accurate we've been on that second year. We've been within a tenth of a percentage of the CPI on the upcoming year. So we've been very accurate on the upcoming year, but I really haven't gone back and looked at it. It's a good question, maybe I'll do that.
Any other questions? Adam, I think it's just a progression in the direction of our financial planning. We're doing a five-year capitalization budget. We're doing long-term strategic planning, and we're tying it out two years, and we're taking the statistical analysis and comparing us to the rest of the nation in a two-year increment. I just think it's appropriate to do the same thing.
Next up, we have item nine. I believe Jerry's out there. Let me step, oh, there he is, right in front of me. Yeah, he's going to say, where'd he go? Give us, and he's going to give us the one-year analysis of JDOT. How are we doing?
What? All right. I just thought it was, I ran it by Mike. Mike thought it was a good idea, too, just because, just for timing-wise. I came just over a year ago, and I wanted to see a snapshot for myself of what's happened. And I thought it'd be a good idea at the same time to kind of do a one-year synopsis for you guys as well to see, you know, what changes have happened, because you guys pretty much took over the road commission and made it a road department just prior to that, so you can kind of see the differences at the same time. The organizational profile, as you see, Jackson County assumed the powers and duties back in January, and then I came in in July. You guys also do a citizen perception, which I think is really neat. I wish this was done in a lot more communities, because this really gives you a community-wide snapshot of what people are looking at. And as you see, in 2013, the ease of car travel in Jackson went up to sixty-eight percent compared to fifty-nine percent in prior years that you did that. The snow removal, I think that, I don't know if I would lay a whole lot of weight on that, and that's my personal opinion, just because you don't know how much snow you get each year to see how that works out. If you get a real light winter, you know, that percentage could jump up to eighty percent because you didn't, you really didn't have to do a lot. The 2013 year and even looking at the 14 year were really harder winters, actually. So being even at thirty-six percent's not bad. We're going to get that extremely higher coming up here in the future, just with efficiencies. And that's my opinion, and I'm going to go with it, sticking with it. Road repairs at the same time, road repairs were headed in a wrong direction. I think we've switched that a lot this spring, this summer. Our goals are, have changed. We're now looking at more on the strategic side of fixing repairs rather than the emergency runs. I'm trying not to tackle all the phone calls one by one. We're trying to get out there, take care of a road, and do a complete township and move forward, and do long-term fixes as well instead of the short-term fixes. Here's a comparison of all the road conditions, just going off of Pacer ratings. If everybody's familiar with Pacer ratings, Pacer ratings are really a perception of the person driving in the van of what the road condition is at the time that they're reviewing it. So it's a snapshot, and if it's done at the same time every year, it becomes real accurate information. That's what's important and key, is that we keep that timeframe at the same time. You can get huge variances in Pacer ratings if one year you do it in the spring and then the following year you do it in the fall, because you may have a whole lot of construction practices that you're either recognizing in one of the years that you didn't in another or vice versa. So with that being said, you can see Jackson had nineteen percent in the poor, sixty percent in the fair, and twenty-one percent in the good. So the good and the fair actually outweigh most, or actually every county in the surrounding area, which is, which is good as far as the road conditions as the Pacer ratings apply. Personnel, the road commission administration's lean, yet there's some savings to be gained. Economy's a scale available and also adds some strength and depth to the county's organization. Well, here's what's happened. We didn't replace the finance office position. The administration contractually assisted Kelvin County, which returns more dollars in the local roads. And JDOT administration has participated in the county leadership, adding depth and tools to make the community better. And overall, over, since about eight years ago, there was twenty-four amendments down to sixteen, but to give you an idea, there was nineteen a year ago, and it's down to sixteen. The overall is about five hundred thousand from a few years ago, but just in the last year, dropping those other three out of that five hundred thousand, those were some pretty significant higher-paying administrative employees that were those last three, which out of that five hundred thousand just in the last year contributes to about a quarter million of that savings. Financially, what was said was the administration where there's most likely to be savings is already lean. There are potential savings in salaries, but most likely not a material change. And what's happened is administrative expenses were cut in half. Reimbursement received through partnerships through Kelvin County has also increased some of the revenue. So if you look in 2010, it's seven hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars in administrative expenses. 2013, it was down to three hundred seventy-six. And that projection is in 2014, it's actually, should be even less than that, so some additional savings.
Let me just jump into, I just want to be, make sure we're all on the same page. Jerry and I've talked about, you know, the cuts that he's made for administration and those sort of things, and we're trying it out, let's put it that way. Because like all things, you know, pendulum's always swinging one way or the other, and you can make, you can find that you have the best plan you laid out, but in actuality, the cut may be more than we can really withstand, let's put it that way. So what I'm saying is, I'm hedging a little here in the sense that he's made some good moves, some good cuts, it appears to be really good, but at the end of the day, if we feel that maybe we might need to add a body back, is what I'm saying. You never know. If it's not really working, we still need to have that flexibility. So while he's making cuts, we're not necessarily telling the board here, we want to give up all those FTEs. We kind of want to hold them in abeyance. But I applaud him for making the move. It's a gutsy move, because let's face it, most, the incentive is to keep your, keep all the people you can, because it's easier for everyone, and you can do it better, you know. So he's really kind of stepping out there for that. Continue, please.
Also, what's happened is no revenue was lost due to the county's assuming the road commission responsibilities, savings in the administrative costs, puts more money into the roads. So as you see, your primary revenue versus our primary expenses, you're going to see that historically, not just Jackson County, but every county in the state, your primary road revenue exceeds your primary road expenditures. And reason being is that the local road issues are so much greater in all the counties that the local road revenue coming in is not sufficient to take care of the roads. So we end up taking and doing a fund transfer and pushing money from the primary road revenues into the local road revenues. I hit on that a few months back with you guys, just letting you know that there is about, you know, a couple million dollars or more a year that we're shifting from primaries into the locals, and you can do up to fifty percent, but that's max. I mean, so that's the catch on it.
Yes, Jerry, is this where you come up with your thirty percent match for the locals?
No, no.
To do the local roads, no?
No, no. I mean, what we're doing, and not in this particular case, we're budgeting out of the local road revenue side of it right at the beginning of the year, how much of that we're going to set aside for a local match. What these transfers end up taking care of is the actual routine maintenance and maintenance activities that we're doing on the local road system. So we over-expand, and we know we're going to every year on the local side because there's just not enough revenue there.
How do you come up with the money for the local match? How do you cover that?
It, as, because maybe that's one of those things that I'll do on a Friday morning is, there's a primary road revenue, there's local road revenue, and then a portion of it comes in as a county road revenue. So at the beginning of the year, we set aside a percentage or a dollar amount, and in the last few years, it's been a dollar amount of that local road revenue is budgeted for local road match monies. If we do not use all that, that money can be shifted over and used for routine maintenance and vice versa. If the townships came and had more than what we needed, we'd have to pull from that local road, routine maintenance side of it and push it into the local match side. On the financial, what was said is incongruent retirement systems, board would be in a DB pension business again. What's happened is the county and ASME Union did not negotiate to get out of the pension system. Union employees remain in the defined benefit pension plan. Non-union JDOT new employees are hired, however, into the defined contribution plan. So for now anyways, things are status quo on the union side, but new employees, as we're hiring them, are going into the defined contribution. Also, what was said is the county is considering movement to a new financial system, and the potential exists to find one financial system that serves both entities. And what's happened is that the county purchased the BSNA, which currently doesn't integrate with what we have, is cogitate, but the potential's there, especially that your BSNA is a Michigan-based company that recognizes road commissions, road department-type work, because a lot of states don't have those. They've got highway departments that take care of everything. And with us shifting over to precision, I think that even opens up the door a little bit more, because that is a web-based, Windows-based program, which may or may not, but I would think it's much more likely to be universally accepted into this BSNA program. We may find that we can get some, get those two programs to start talking, and at least in the future, they could work on making that happen. Also, what was said is opportunities exist regardless of the outcome of the study to collaborate with County Fleet and Facilities, Department for Road Repair and Maintenance. Facility's integrated in the JDOT buildings and a capital improvement plan, and JDOT has, and has completed some repairs on facility vehicles faster and less expensive. So we have taken care of, you know, they've had a dump truck, we brought it in, did some repairs, did some stuff for them. And the other side of it is, is... did some repairs, did some stuff for them. Uh, and the other side of it is, is, you know, we're going out and we're working in the parks, doing a little paving, doing some blading if they need it, when we have the time. We're trying to, we're trying to work back and forth, uh, with these other, uh, facilities, especially, uh, when time allows, but it, it's been working. On the technology side, what was said is the county already provides IT support for the road commission. Um, most savings have been realized, um, and there hasn't been a change. The county IT still supports us. Um, communication's improved and we work more closely, as appears in the same team. Um, and we did have a meeting the other day, um, uh, with Donald and myself, looking at the IT and, and it is, you know, opening up that line of communication between the two is, is huge and, uh, so that we can, you know, work with each other and see what IT needs we have, uh, so that he can ramp up in the future. Uh, Donald's a very, um, smart guy. He's looking for two, three, four, five years out of what the IT needs are gonna be so that we don't get hit, uh, with a big whopper and say, "All right, need thirty thousand dollars to upgrade." Um, we're looking out five to seven years to make sure that we've got that stuff budgeted so that we don't get stung in the future. Political side of it, what was, what was said is expectations will be high should the county assume the powers from the road commissions. Uh, no additional revenues are received, but an expectation for improved service and visible results will be expected. Expectations have been high, uh, and they're high everywhere. And commissioners approved a township-county match program, which has been received posit- positively. Nine townships are participating in county match program in two thousand fourteen. Um, you, yeah, you guys took on a very political side of, uh, road commissions are tough. Um, and I commend all of you because you guys have all been handling it, uh, very professionally. Um, I know I said something to Julie the other day. When the concerns are there, they're sincere. Um, and I think everybody recognizes that, uh, in the public, um, which is a huge support for me, is, and knowing that you guys are, are asking the questions on, uh, not, not taking it into the deep political, but doing it because it's sincere, um, makes life a lot easier on me, 'cause I know that they're, they're valid concerns, uh, when you bring them to us. Uh, what was said was projection selection has potential to be adversarial amongst commissioners who may think it's their responsibility to fight for dollars. Commissioners have advocated for projects, but not against each other, um, which again, commend you for it. Cultural, what was said is cultural adjustments will take time. There may be an initial conflict between employees of the two entities due to differences in contracts, work conditions, and history. And the, uh, they must say in the Jackson way. What happened was, is cultural integration between JDOT and other county employees is, is increasing. Um, we recognize that as, as we share equipment, share personnel, talk to each other, uh, that whole integration, uh, is taking place. Uh, do you still hear some of those, you know, you know, it's the Jackson way or whatever? Yeah, but it's decreasing and it will go away eventually. On the management side, what was said is the road commission would be, exists as a leather department amidst a broad range of services under the direction of the administrative controller and the board of commissioners. And the acquisition of the road commission promotes concept of a single point of service. Citizens get confused about how to access government 'cause of the split services. What's happened is the county administrative controller has supervised myself and the director as the same as his other direct reports. Uh, we believe it's less confusing with a single point of service. Also, what was said was steep learning curve for the business and opportunities exist to improve communication with citizens. What's happened is that the decisions come to the board of commissioners are straightforward. Understanding Act Fifty-One is the job of the director explains the confines of the legislation as it is appropriate. Um, and we're gonna get into that in the near future here. I'll start trying to educate and do some more of that stuff for you guys. Um, and still working on communication. We've added more social media. The previous efforts are already used.
I wanna chime in on that communication piece, if I may, there. I, I think, uh, like, like anything new, there's always transitional challenges with, you know, and communication is one of the, it, it, on the face of it, it sounds like it's such a simple thing. We communicate constantly all the time, but yet, in reality, is not as simple as one might think. And I know we've, we've had some turnover, some employees, and, and frankly, some front-line positions who, uh, answer the phone, for one. I know I've had complaints about, "You called, no one's there." And to some degree, there was some case, times when that was true. I know since then, I believe you've rectified it, uh, put someone there. Um, is Mike still at the front?
Yeah, Mike sits up there as well. So, I actually have three people that have the potential of answering the phone now up there.
Okay, good, good. As well as on, on the, the admin side, management side, there's been some change too. But, um, I, I just wanna say, I, I recognize there's been some challenges, but frankly, given the difficulty with some of the key positions that we've had to fill, I think it's been pretty good. And frankly, I'm really looking forward. I think it's gonna be, um, much better here and in the future.
Yeah, and, and there are some key changes that are, that it will, that have happened, and we are doing the training now. Um, one of the positions now is gonna have, uh, one of the employees is gonna be a, um, pretty much a township liaison person. He's gonna handle everything. So, townships are gonna have a single source person that all their answers, questions, concerns, their bids, their, is gonna be handled by a individual. They don't have to guess who it is. They don't have to, and that person's gonna distribute it to the appropriate people, but he's gonna be the contact that gets back to them on a daily basis all the time. That's gonna be his sole job is make sure townships are informed and kept aware of everything that, uh, so, that's, uh, that's gonna be a huge key change for us.
Um, with that, you're gonna communicate with that person, would that person be able to communicate with us and let us, give us a list of what is going to happen in, uh, the various townships? So, when we get calls, I, I've always said, "I don't run the road commission if you have it, 'cause I don't wanna get involved in your business. Call them and ask them." But it would save calls if I knew that this might be done within the next two or three weeks or...
Yes. Uh, not only that, um, but I also sent a sample to Mike the other day. There, we're already working on revamping our, our webpage, but hopefully it'll turn into a, a tie bar of the county webpage that's going to have all the construction projects laid out, um, for multiple years, even the local side. So, and our dashboard will be out there so that people can see where everything's at. But that's, that's in the makings. We're, we're just trying to get all the pieces together for that.
Commissioner Duncan?
If I may just chime in briefly, is, is in regard to that as well, we wanna have that so it's, it's not just a, a list of streets and dates, but also a, a map. So that, you know, you see the, the road color and, and one color would indicate, you know, they're currently actively working on that road, or another color may be, they're gonna be working on that road next week or some time parameter. So, they have a key there. Because I believe visually, you know, maps are, you know, people understand that a lot, a lot quicker. They don't have to read it. They can just look at it and see, "Oh, oh, next week my road," or, or, you know, that kinda thing. So, go ahead.
Probably, Jerry, I'd like to thank you for your responses. I feel like I, I'm almost like a pain on your side because of the Jefferson Road. It, project's been controversial in my district for a couple of years. People wanna get it done in two thousand ten, not two thousand fourteen. And the date's already passed, but I, I've called in requests to you and had people refer to you. And I get a call back and I, I get to thank you because, to pass along to you, because it's like, wow, we called and next Monday they were there, they did the job. And, uh, people are impressed. And I hate to call you with things, but, uh, people with the transition of JDOT over to a county department, commissioners get calls. And, uh, you take good care of our requests, and I'd like to thank the road commission for that.
There are times, and I recognized it the other day, just so that everybody knows. Um, when I'm in Calhoun, and I didn't recognize this, it kinda caught me right between the eyes when we had the issue with the contractor and the township, uh, the other day. Um, when I'm in a meeting in their meeting room, and I never knew this was happening. I just never paid attention. Um, there's absolutely no cellphone reception in there. And had I not walked outside the door, uh, to take a break and watched my phone go buzz, 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 and there were some serious concerns going on, it was already late. And I was like, "Well, okay, we're gonna, so, we've got IT over there going to be putting in a, uh, a cellphone booster down in that room so that that stuff doesn't happen." Um, and that, that, um, that kinda stuff just kinda sneaks up on you once in a while. And, and good, bad, or indifferent, it, it, it happened and we're taking care of that little snip doo. Yeah.
And, uh, your department's doing a fine job. If we have a, a request to get back to constituents, you're addressing it. And, uh, makes the commissioners look good. And that's not the intent. We're just trying to do our job because we're not supposed to be the contact person. But the public seems to call us and, and, uh, you guys jump right on it. Appreciate it.
Uh, some of the other collaboration, uh, that, uh, was said was opportunities exist for regular and preventative maintenance on county vehicles with or without consolidation. And we're the board of commissioners to assume power for the road commissioners. Collaboration with other counties could be explored as directed to the board of commissioners. And what's happened is collaboration with Calvin County has worked successfully for both counties and brought in about five hundred thousand to date. Um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit this key point 'cause it happened, uh, just recently. By collaborating, um, with Calhoun in our purchasing, to give you, um, just one piece of information on purchasing is that we've, we chose to go out together and purchase our salt early in the year, um, bid it out. Um, my deal always waits till a little later, which is the MDOT, um, side of it. There's about twenty-six dollars a ton difference. And when you look at just ten thousand ton, we do closer to twenty thousand ton. Um, but for every ten thousand ton, I mean, you're looking at a quarter of a million dollars. So, there'd be about a half a million dollars just in salt savings this year, had we not done that and bid out early and went with the my deal pricing. So, um, and that's just one, you know, one piece. A lot of the other stuff, we've, we've recognized some big savings as well, but, um, you know, MDOT's going, coming to us saying, "Hey, can you help us? Can you sell?" So, you know, it's like, well, but, you know, just, just that salt thing. I mean, that, that's huge for us.
How much was that again?
Uh, about twenty-six dollars a ton. Uh, we got about, we, we got about twenty thousand, so actually closer to half a million, but I was just saying every ten thousand tons, you know.
And if I may just add, Jerry alluded to MDOT. MDOT actually wants to buy some salt from us because our price is so much lower than what they were quoted at my deal. So, and as, you know, Jerry and I were talking about it, I'm like, "Well, we don't wanna cut ourselves short, but if we have excess and we can sell some, all the better."
Uh, five-year revenue history, um, as you can see, uh, pretty stagnant at best. Uh, revenues really, um, have not changed. Um, and I really don't see a whole lot of change until legislation happens where they do a long-term fix. Um, however, I, I did, um, send out a, a thing to Mike, um, what's coming up is that there was a second piece of that original, uh, money that was gonna be sent out. Um, they're looking at sending that second piece out. They're not sure how it's gonna get distributed, other than it is gonna go through the Act Fifty-One formula. Um, and for Jackson County, um, we're looking at about nine hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar bump. Um, that would come in after, you know, the fiscal year, which would be October one. So, sometime October, November, December, we're not sure when. Um, it's close to a million dollars. So, that'll be a huge, um, shot in the arm to do even more out there on the, on the roads for us. So, hopefully, uh, that all transpires and happens sooner than later, but, um, but that is coming down the horizon as well.
Any other thoughts?
No, no. The, uh, the way they set it up was the way all that money, instead of picking pet projects, uh, they run it all through the Act Fifty-One and let us utilize it in our best interest. Uh, we could've used it for routine maintenance on local roads, used it for match monies on locals. We could've used it, you know, any way we wanted, and this second batch comes in that way. So, uh, it's a nice way to, to, uh, to do that. Um, challenging snow season in two thousand fourteen. Um, I guess I don't need to say anything more than that. That was, that was more than challenging. Uh, if you look, the winter maintenance is the light blue on top. Um, tail end of two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen, uh, as you notice, the expenditures on winter maintenance were, uh, were quite significant. And, uh, projection is, is this winter supposed to be similar to last winter. So, hopefully that's wrong, but...
Could you just briefly describe your, your plans? 'Cause I know you have some major changes coming up with snow removal and how you're gonna go about it, just briefly for the board?
Yeah, just briefly, um, uh, looking at setting up, um, our snow routes differently. Uh, looking at setting, uh, a specific employee into each township so they'll handle that township. Um, and then putting specific people on primary road systems, um, so that they're, um, higher equipped trucks, the ones with salters and wings are actually taking care of those primaries, uh, more efficiently. Um, but at the same time, by having a dedicated employee in a township, um, that employee then, uh, will be responsible to make sure that that township gets done each day. Um, we're also gonna dedicate, um, some of those newer one tons with those front plows that are, uh, more efficient and, uh, and quicker and can get around the smaller subdivisions. Uh, we're looking at setting up four. Those are gonna be specifically into subdivisions, taking care of subdivisions right off the bat right in the morning. So, um, we should be able to, um, get out and get all the roads is my goal. Um, but the majority of the roads are done every day, um, in the first day. So, if there's a struggle or two into the second day, uh, it's, should only be because of a breakdown or something else, but...
What about the, um, going back and forth for salt?
Uh, yes. Instead of, you know, the way the routes are set up right now, we may have a person that's traveling thirty, forty miles out, um, running out of salt, coming back, has to run back out to their route to, um, maneuver. Um, all of these routes are set up, um, so that those township ones, uh, they would, should only have to, no township should need more than a load of salt on the local road system and, and the small, um, secondary roads. So, they'd never have to come back. They just gotta stay out there and take care of the route. So, they're not backtracking. We're not gonna get that, um, continually backtracking, uh, to go back and get salt. The primary road trucks then, um, are, would be set up so that their routes, um, are capable of running, 'cause you salt on your way back. Uh, you do one run out, you're, you're just blading. You're salting and blading on your way back. The way these routes would be set up is so that when they get out and they turn around, the distance from their far point back, um, will be enough that one load will take care of that, um, so that they're not, um, one, they're not running out before they do get back, and, and number two, they're not, uh, gonna have a half a load. And, you know, and, I'm just trying to, everything there is set up for efficiency so that, that they're empty by the time they get back or darn close to it. Um, and then going out on their second portion of their primary roadside. So, it should be a lot more efficient than what we have been.
Commissioner Lightner?
Um, I'm just curious. Earlier this year, when we discussed the, um, the amount of maintenance that you needed for your trucks, I think you had mentioned that eighteen of thirty-five trucks were down at one point, one day. Um, and I know that some of the roads in my district weren't done for like three days. So, I'm just curious where the fleet is at this point. I mean, we're only a couple months away from snow flying again, unfortunately. And so, I'm just curious where the fleet is at as far as percentage-wise for trucks that are ready to roll and go into the winter season.
The, uh, the fleets today is very similar to what it was last year when we were, went into the winter. It hasn't changed, um, because we haven't received our new trucks yet. So, there are, the, uh, one-ton trucks, like I was saying, they're on their way. They're getting built. They should be here in another, about another month. Uh, so those will all be new and ready to go. Um, when we got into the purchasing of the larger trucks, we recognized that the build time was gonna be to where it took us all the way into December or January before we could even get the trucks in. So, that's why you saw that the way we split it up is that we were gonna get two complete trucks and then the other two, um, collider trucks would come in later, um, so that we at least have two trucks ready to roll before winter hits. So, we are in the process right now of, um, the Calhoun-Jackson collaborative purchasing team is putting out bids, um, for the following year's trucks right now so that we don't have that issue, so that we actually got the bids. We're coming and getting approval first thing, uh, January or February so that the trucks are in and ready to go by July, August at the latest, so that we're, um, we have those trucks ready and available to us prior to any snowfall.
I understand that, but the other... But the other trucks are those just junk and you're not repairing them? Or like, what percentage is your fleet, you know, as far as up and running? Because last year, half of it was out.
Well, half of it was out at any given time, but we repaired all those. I mean, so yeah, they're up and running again. We're at, we have, we have enough trucks for every employee right now and that's it. We don't have spares.
Right. So you're...
Yeah. But again, we've got the five one tons coming, so there'll be those. And then there should be two of the bigger trucks in before winter hits as well, so there should be seven. That's not enough, in my opinion. But that's where we're, that's where we're working. We have four other ones coming in right after the beginning of the year that can get, start getting built. That should take care of that and get us up to enough.
Thank you. In regard to the snow season, how have we been tracking where the snow plows have been and what is the plan for the future? What roads have been plowed in a timely manner?
Tracking before, it wasn't tracked. And that's where we were having issues. This new way of doing it is a lot easier to track because when the employee comes back, they're gonna be responsible for letting us know what routes got done and which ones didn't get done. Because the goal is, is to also have an afternoon shift of about five people that will be going out. And if there's some significant primary roads that didn't get done, that's their first goal is to go out and clear those. But if those are in decent shape and there's some locals that didn't get done by the day crew, that afternoon crew will go out and take care of those to make sure that everything's done. So instead of running a day shift and then a state road-only midnight shift, we'd be running a day shift, an afternoon shift, county side, and then you still have that state midnight shift. So that we don't get the hardback and have the issues on all those primary roads in the middle of the night, especially when it's snowing after the guys go home. And that was an issue that, that I kinda recognized right off the bat is we were, we were letting our primaries go for nearly 12 hours without anybody being on them. And for every quarter inch of hardback per lane mile that gets put on the road, it takes about 1,000 ton of salt to burn it off. Well, if we're gonna waste that kind of salt, you take 1,000 ton per mile, if a guy normally does 30 miles, and you're talking 50, almost $60 a ton. You're talking 60,000 times that 30, you know, there's $180,000 of wasted money on a regular basis going out on each route. And it's like, that afternoon shift only costs a couple thousand dollars to keep that off. So we don't have that expense. So much more efficient, but much cheaper, too.
Just a quick question. I can't remember if those trucks are equipped with GPS so you can keep a track of them?
They're not currently set up with GPS. However, we've already started doing our studies to see what we need to do and what program's the cheapest and the best so that we can GPS them. And the, the best systems leave a cookie crumb so we can actually track and see where they've been all day. So if there is a call on, on a road that had not been snowplowed, we can go back and look and see, yeah, it wasn't, or yes, it was. It just snowed so much that it looks like it wasn't done. Because we have that happen quite a bit. If it's snowing hard in the morning and that happens to be the first road a truck heads by afternoon, people are coming home and they're saying, you never plowed my road. Well, chances are, they probably did, but it's sure not gonna look like it.
Let me just chime in just briefly. The couple things. One of the nice things about this new plan Jerry has for snow plowing is not only does, is there personal accountability for an area, but there's also personal pride in that. That driver's responsible for that township. And it's not long, as you all know, a small community, for everybody knows who that driver is and he works this area. And, you know, it's, hey, Joe at the coffee shop, Mike, what, what happened? That sort of thing. So that, that point of pride, I think, will go a long way to making sure those are done. Not, as well as the efficiency of the route design. I was looking at them, it's, it's genius, frankly. Jerry's experiences are truly paying off there. But in regard to the GPS, you know, we've been looking at that. I, I think that has a lot of value, especially in a sense that, and it's not all decided yet, obviously, or anything, but it would be great if you can see online, if, if the average person could pull up their computer and see where the trucks are. You know, because you can see the dots. I know there's some security maybe issues and so forth. We'll have to work through some of those challenges. But clearly, I think, you know, they could actually see that there's 19 trucks on the road, right? Just by pulling up the map, you know? And that's, and like Jerry said, from a management perspective, the ability to go back and track and see where they were, how fast they were moving, how long they stayed in one spot, that's nice. I mean, there's some accountability there as well.
Mine was gonna be the same question because I remember Jerry had mentioned that. Saw a comment briefly that at my employment, at my agency, we use TrackStar. And we have data devices in the cars, so the connection was already there. But it is just great to be able to go back and look and see where they've been and look at the trail of where they've been. So very useful for us and I'm sure it would be for you guys.
Oh, yeah.
Are we talking about cameras, too? Cameras, vehicle cameras? Have you talked about any of that?
I, I haven't. But yeah, there's, we've got them into some of our equipment already for safety purposes and nothing else. But we've mounted cameras on the back of some of our loaders just to try it because they're backing in and out of the buildings and they're loading salt. When you have an issue and you're coming out of a dark room and it's sunny outside into a dark room and your eyes haven't adjusted, or, but the opposite happens when they're in there and they're backing out. You know, you're catching the corner of the salt shed or, especially if there's employees back there. So we've tried some cameras and it's working all great. They can actually get that third perspective of what's behind them. But even the dirt patchers, there's a guy that's working back there. And if he's patching and the guy's driving forward, you know, you've got two things going on. Number one, you've got an employee back there that's by himself, trying to contend with traffic, but do his job at the same time. But he needs to let the, let the truck know to move ahead. You know, so they were trying, you know, audibles, but if it's too loud, the guy can't hear it inside. So mounting a camera on there, now the driver's actually watching and seeing what he's doing, he can pull, pull forward just by watching, seeing what's going on. So for $90, hooking up in there, it's made the dirt patchers more efficient, too, and it's made them safer. So the camera guy can actually not only watch the guy and know to move forward, but he's also seeing traffic coming at him. So if he sees something coming at him that doesn't look good, he can blow the horn to catch the guy's attention at the same time. So have implemented that as well on some of the stuff and we wanna advance that a little further, too. This is the local side and the snow side. The last one was the primary roads, but same thing, you can kinda get an idea. But that's also pothole patching, seal coating, wedging, you know, overbanding. You can kinda see how things have, we track all this stuff, actually. I mean, if anybody wanted a detailed report on all that, I'd give you all of it. But this is a quick snapshot of, of what's going on for the past few years. Township collaboration, actually, 2014 projected a 550,000. I'm saying now it's probably gonna be almost double that. Could be. Because we just had a few more that were significant dollar amounts. And I do have another one that's looking at two or three that totaled out to another quarter million or so. So that could be significantly higher by the time we get done with, with what we're doing. So that was my projection before, but it should come in quite a bit higher than that. Other transition successes. HR's assisted in human resource functions with both active employees and retirees. Had a tentative agreement on the union contract. They took a vote the other day. I should probably let her know that they voted it down for it anyway, so it's at a standstill. But county facilities departments assume responsibility for transportation facilities. JDOT's allowed other departments to use their space when need be. Finance side of it, county and JDOT merged audits in 2013. And JDOT's completed and has plans for additional maintenance for county parks as well as they need help. And we have the time and the resources to do it. Program changes, procedures, and implementations. We did purchase a paver to allow the JDOT employees to complete our paving projects for townships, locals, and primaries on their own. They're currently out there doing that. It's going relatively smooth. They, they've picked it up and they're going with it quite nicely, actually. So that's working out well. We purchased the dirt patcher, so instead of paying 80,000 a year for rental, we purchased them all at one time and we can save that. Capital investment strategy of allowing a partnership with MDOT to provide needed depreciation revenue into our budget. I think I gave you guys a presentation on that before and all that all works, but that'll allow us to upgrade our equipment even faster. So that's gonna work out quite a bit better, though. And the township match programs allow us to help townships repair local roads where some of our greatest needs exist. Tandem truck purchases have been changed to add sidewings to all the trucks. That just makes everything more efficient in the wintertime. Changed our seal coating procedures to include fog sealing, which places that second layer of oil over the top of the seal coat to lock in those loose stones. And, yeah...
Is that Lansing Avenue? Is that what you guys did out there?
Oh...
From the county, from the city limits out to, was it Parnell Dave or how much further?
Yes. Well, yeah.
Is that the fog coating and everything like that?
Yeah.
I have been contacted by, by businesses on that stretch of road and they were, they were very impressed with that system and are really surprised. And the other thing that surprised a couple of them, you came back two days later and swept up all the stones that were in the, in the gutters and everything like that along the road edge to reutilize. And they were very happy, they're very happy with that, that fog coating you put down.
Yeah, and it does. It's not just, it is aesthetically more pleasing. It looks like a brand-new road, but the, the, the value that it adds to your seal coat by keeping the stones locked down and by putting that extra layer of seal so water can't get down into them, voids of the stone and break apart your seal are huge. And even when you paint those center lines, you'll see those center lines and stuff, they're not going down in the cracks. You actually get a real good, bright center line paint at the same time. And it's, it's, it's very economical because it's so thin. You're, you're gonna, .13 gallons per square yard. I mean, you're looking at like three grand a mile. So it's, it's just, it's a huge benefit. The other thing that we empowered some of the union employees is working for them to reduce some of the administrative costs, but also put some ownership into the union and to get greater input and cooperation. That's been a success. The challenges is turnovers in employees. You know, the, the high insurance costs and pension costs have had a lot of them wanting to seek employment elsewhere. Retirements have added to the loss. You lose that historical knowledge. And I sound like I'm hitting Jim Latham's right to a T, but new hires require the training and carries with it inexperience when it comes to some of those tasks. Inconsistencies of how we handle things has added to the challenge. You know, some of those inconsistencies, to give you an idea, that have been a real challenge is when you hear one township got free buying for some reason at one point and other ones were paying for it. And some were getting free gravel for some reason and some were paying for it. Some of the employees would have a 90-day probation, others would get a whole year of probation for some reason. And some would pay dues after 90 days where the other ones would pay them after a year. You know, permits were required by some people for a project, other people were, you know, set aside. It was like, whoa. Those inconsistencies were eating me alive. It's like, what do you mean? So you'll see, and sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. So some people are upset when they were getting things for free, they're not getting it anymore for free. But at the same time, if it was things that we should've been giving out for free, that there, some people are benefiting because they are. So everything's fair and concise and by the book and there's, the inconsistencies are going away. All of them are. A lot of that came with the way certain people handled things. I can't think of one of those people that are still employed with us now. So those kinda went away that way. But at the same time, everything, everybody's being treated fair and consistently across the county now. So we don't get into those issues where he got that and he got this and I didn't. That's not good. That, that hurts all of us. Yeah.
Jerry, are the, I know, you're gonna speak of signs later, I believe, in the training element?
I sure can.
Are you gonna address the refund you recently did?
I will do that.
In that, or you do, where would you do it at here?
I could do it right now, actually. It kinda fits. You know, that's one of those inconsistencies that I'm not sure how it happened. And it happened on my time, which really bothers me, is that an individual wanted a speed limit sign on a road and we sold this person signs and installed them on a road that did not warrant, did not require, and did not have a traffic control order on it to even begin to put a sign up. So we refunded that check to that lady, sent her a letter stating for, you know, sorry for the inconvenience, however, it should never have been allowed to happen in the first place. And we removed the signs. Those things just cannot happen like that. That's, that's something that we can't have and which we won't have. We currently now have, in all of our permitting processes, is a permit agent and another person that is reviewing everything that comes in and out. So it's not one person that's making a choice and doing something for somebody. There's two people reviewing all of it so that that kinda stuff doesn't happen anymore. So that if somebody asks for a sign, it comes through the permit agent, if he recognizes that it's a need and it should happen, it still goes to the director of Ops who then makes sure that it is warranted, double-checking it basically before it goes to the sign department to go out and get done. So that's, just implemented that because it's like, all right, from now on, there's a checks and balance on everything coming in and out of here.
Jerry, on the sign issue, I'm familiar with the road. It's probably a mile long, tops, dead ends. There's been talk throughout the road that the speed limit was going to be raised due to some regulations or whatever to 55 mile an hour possibly. It's always been a unposted but recognized 25 or 35 mile an hour. Can you tell me how this is gonna be handled, what the speed limit would be?
The speed limit is, we're actually gonna get into that in my overview later with my education session. I'm specifically gonna be addressing not that particular road, but how road speeds are gonna be set by law of what's recognized alongside that road to make them a 25, a 35, a 45, or a, or a prima facie a 55 mile an hour road. So I will address that. And we did review the road and we did go through and do the access points along that road to see where it would come in at, so...
What did you find out?
There's not enough access points along that to warrant any reduction in speed, actually.
So what will it be?
Unposted 55.
That's not right.
It's, I'm not saying it is.
It's always been a recognized third, 25 or 35 mile an hour road since it's been there. And the sign issue brought it to the forefront. That's not a 55 mile an hour road. I mean, it's a dead end road going into a subdivision and somebody's gonna get hurt.
And I know what you're saying, but that's really, that's not our call. That ends up being, currently, there's a process. If the township chooses that they do not recognize, do not believe that that road should be a 55, they can contact the road department and with the state police. They actually create a, a group that studies it then. But there's an agreement at the beginning of that process that everybody has to sign off on that says that once that study is done and they, they review it and they set a speed limit, whatever that may be, you're agreeing to that posted speed then. So, you know, that's kind of a...
To, to the people that live there, though, on this street, it looks like, in appearance, and I know this isn't the case, but in appearance, it appears that there's some getting even being done because, maybe because the refund had to be given for the sign.
Absolutely.
You can't take that back to 55.
What we can and will do is follow the law.
That's all we can do. That's all we can do.
So we'll follow, whatever that law is, we'll follow that law to the letter. Um, but we, you know, 'cause we don't have the authority to deviate from what the law is or is not. And, and frankly, Jerry's gonna do a session a little bit on the, what the law and speed limit sign, so, you know, for that, we'll get into that a little more.
It's not my district as a commissioner, but I'm familiar with it. You can guess why. And it's unfortunate that the speed limit's gonna change on it because nobody, um, that I'm familiar with was complaining about the speed limit. It was just the fact that, um, a resident claimed to have paid for some speed limit signs, which sounded stupid to me. And it, it is almost like they're being penalized now. You can say what you want, but that's how it looks. And it's Commissioner Duckham's district, but you're gonna have some upset people out there if the speed limit gets raised. And I recognize how speed limits are set. I think there's some point of discussion probably on the fact that it's a platted subdivision and it may have something to do with what year it was platted. I can't fathom how that would make a difference when you're setting a speed limit if it was platted in thirty-nine versus sixty-nine. But, so, nobody requested a analysis for the speed limit on it, but we're gonna do that anyway. Are we gonna do that throughout the county then? 'Cause I can name a whole bunch of places.
Well, one, let me just jump in here. And I know he's gonna go through the law with everybody here shortly, but once the county becomes aware of something that's not in accordance with the law, we have some liability there and we need to follow the law on it. So while I agree that I don't like the appearance and, and I haven't been out to that road and it may very well be that I would agree that, you know, it shouldn't be fifty-five, but we'll follow the process to change that legally. And, you know, we may have to have some community meetings with the neighbors around there to explain what has happened, but nonetheless, we can't just, once we're aware of it, we can't turn a blind eye to it and say, well, you know, we, we need to follow the rules on it, is what we're doing. And I agree, the appearance isn't there, but we still have to follow the rules and I, you would concur with that.
I would, but again, it has the, it has the appearance of being punitive.
I agree it has, but...
Let, let's be fully forthright here. If we're gonna move that fast on the speed limit, why didn't we move that fast in checking about how this happened? I mean...
We know how it happened. That person...
Now you do, yes.
That person's no longer employed here now.
But the debate has been had on this for a couple of months anyway.
Uh, not with me.
Not about the speed limit, but about the purchasing of signs.
Okay, um, the outlook, uh, greater, uh, greater collaboration with the township, um, administrative cost controls are in place, maximizing the state funds for capital investment and focusing on being competitive in our in-house work for additional revenues. Just like our seal coat program, we're tracking to see where we came in at this year to make sure that we are being competitive. Uh, the employees have a great attitude. They wanna make sure that they're being competitive and, and doing things efficiently 'cause they, they do, they want, they take pride in the roads and they wanna be able to bring some of that work back in-house so that they can, um, not only stay busy but stay employed at the same time because that's, you know, that, that's the downside of, uh, farming everything out is that there's no money for the, uh, for the employees then. So, uh, they've been, they've been really working hard at, uh, trying to be as efficient as possible on, on these projects. Any other questions?
No, it's not about signs. Uh, it's kind of a two-part question, maybe more for Mike than Jerry. One of the things that people were waving a flag on when we were debating taking over the road commission was, uh, the cost of insurance and that it was gonna cost us way more to insure, uh, and it would jeopardize refunds. Well, I think we found initially that, uh, insuring through the regular county insurer, the rate was lower. Was that accurate, Mike? And that's...
That's correct.
And that's still holding true today?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay, and then, uh, can you give us an update on the refunding issue or would it be not appropriate here? Because there, my recollection was we were talking at least a couple of million dollars in potential refunds that we should have been given.
Uh, we are. I, I, I can tell you that, uh, I kinda remember it being closer to a million or, or something over a million, I'll give it that. We are in a joint, well, let's put this way, we, we potentially are going to file a lawsuit against that insurance, against that, well, insurance provider. We are in a cooperative arrangement with Calhoun County and Ingham County. Our attorneys represent, all three of us have sent a letter to that company asking that they refund us our money, in all honesty. If they choose not to, well, then we'll have to decide whether to file an action. Um, I'm thinking we probably will, so, but that's where it's at. I haven't heard response from the letter. They sent, sent a demand letter to them saying, hey, we want you to go back and calculate what you owe us and pay us. So that's where that is.
Yeah, in all fairness to the other insurance company that, you, you, when you're looking at dollars and cents, they're very close. However, the McCrisp and Crisps, both the ones that, uh, the road departments, uh, road commissions have, they, um, they did onsite inspections quarterly through all your facilities for free. And they also did onsite training for any training needs that you want at any given time, you just call, uh, and that was all free too. So those are things that now we are doing in-house, um, which costs us a little bit of time and energy, um, but we are, we are getting by with that. It's not, not a big issue, but...
We understand that, Jerry, but we were removed from McCrisp.
Oh, I, oh, I know. Yeah, you had no choice.
Yeah. It wasn't like we wanted to not participate. They were not interested...
Yes.
...in having counties that were, that were the board of commissioners were running them.
The insurance pools themselves, um, were interested. The issue came up is that they took it to a vote of the, because the way those are set up, being self-insured, they had to take it to the pool of road commissions and ask them to vote on whether or not to allow counties in. And to be quite frank, they voted no not to let them in because they were hoping that would deter counties from taking over road commissions. But then they happened, so they kinda shot themselves in the foot with the whole thing 'cause, um, Jackson being a large county, Ingham being a large county and even Calhoun, that, um, revenue source that we were providing and giving to them and it was significant. So their fund pool balances dropping every year because of it. So it wasn't a smart choice. I think they recognized it, the, the pool themselves recognized it early and wanted to keep everybody. It was the road commissions that voted on it, were the ones that, uh, didn't have the foresight to look forward, but...
Sounds like a racketeering scheme to me.
Thank you, Jerry. Moving on, the next item is number ten, improved work environment strategy. I believe, you have, you have a PowerPoint for this one?
Two minutes. Well, let me pull it up here. Do you wish to have a presentation on this subject at this point? Okay, 'cause I don't know that I can do it in two minutes. Yeah, as part of the, the new plan to report to the strategies as we go along during the year versus all at once, one of the things the, uh, we've tried to do is make it more engaging to, to you, the board. And so as, uh, my goal is here is to get you to think, uh, how we think and to maybe share some of the burden of thinking of, uh, how to make this, uh, the, improve the work environment in Jackson County. So I wanted to take you through some of the, what we call diagnostic questions for, um, aligning the way you manage with people's core fundamental beliefs. So we ask this of employees and, and we, we ask it at our Jackson County Mojo and we, the new employee orientation. We also ask it, uh, at the HBO retreat because if you are managing in a way that's inconsistent with these fundamental beliefs, then you can't be high performing. So this is, really gets at the very crux of high performance organizations, which you hear us talk about a lot. So the first one, there's three here, and I think you'll find them interesting. The first one's called the nature of people and their attitudes towards work. And so there's a dichotomy here. There's two, two sides of it and they're both extremes. One is people don't like work, they're not ambitious and don't want responsibility and they won't do a good, good job unless they're directed or closely supervised or coerced. So that, that's one side of the spectrum. And then the other side of the spectrum is doing a good job's a core need of people. They wanna be a part of something important. They wanna be empowered. Self-control and self-direction are more effective than external control. So we ask employees, where do we fit on that spectrum? And there's no right answer, yet, but you have to figure out where your workforce is on that spectrum. Because if, if our workforce is over in, in this area here, where they're, they're more about, uh, doing a good deed, doing a good job is more, uh, core to them than, uh, close supervision and coercion and stuff like that. But yet we're managing over here on this side, like people have to be closely supervised to do their work, then you're gonna disconnect people and, uh, make an unhappy workforce. So again, I, I don't wanna put you on the spot to try to answer these questions, just wanna, wanna you to share the burden of thinking through this as like we do with all employees. So the second question is, what's the primary source of motivation for people? And this, you ask this of yourself, the people that you work with, and ultimately the organization as a whole. We have to answer that. So on this side, it says motivated primarily by lower level needs, safety, security, salary, benefits, status, working conditions, supervision conflict. And what we have to understand with this one is we've, we're compensating employees at a market competitive level. It doesn't mean you're the highest paid employer, but it also means that they can't go across the street and earn twice as much money. So assuming they have a market competitive salary and they're performing at this level, what does it take to get them to perform at this level? So this left side of the spectrum would say that if they're here and you want them to be here, all you have to do is throw more money at them, more vacation days, a better office, things like that, and they'll perform right there for you. Well, the other side of that is they're motivated primarily by hi- higher level needs like self-esteem, having interesting work that challenges them, gives them responsibility, they're recognized, their growth opportunities, things like that. So that's the other side of the spectrum. And again, there's no right answer, but you ask, you have to answer the question, where is your organization right here on this spectrum? Are we closer to this side or are we closer to this side? And then the last one, last diagnostic question is, where is knowledge and creativity in the organization? The left side of this spectrum would say it's at the top of the organization 'cause all the smart people and the brilliant people rise to the top and so they, they have all the answers. Uh, Mike's nodding his head there. He's... And then the right side of the question, the right side of that spectrum is not that all the knowledge and creativity is at the bottom, but that it's widely distributed throughout the organization, that everybody has ideas, has the knowledge, creativity and ability to provide answers to questions. And in fact, maybe some people at the front lines may have more answers than the people that are top that are disconnected from the, the customers a little bit. So again, last question, but this is the last question, but you have to ask these questions because if we're managing, if we truly believe that everybody has knowledge and creativity and ideas, but yet at the top we make all the decisions without consulting them, then we can't be a high performing organization. Or vice versa, so... So we have a document that's called the county leadership philosophy and, uh, hopefully some of you have seen that on the walls around the county or on our website. And if you look at those three questions and then you look at this document, you'll see how the county employees have gone through those questions, they've answered them in a way that fits them. And it's typically around the, on the middle of the, of the right side. It's not all the way to the right. You, some you might, might lead to believe, or some you may think it's all the way on the left. But they've, they've said, you know, we're kinda around what we call sector or quadrant three there in that, um, that third area. So this, if you have some time, look over that leadership philosophy and those questions and you'll kinda see how they came up with that. So getting to the reporting part of this, uh, in the improved work environment team, we're, we've been putting together this Jackson way and, uh, we've been filling in blocks to it. The, uh, quick tea, there's the values that you set, uh, led during last year's process. All these things are familiar to you. The continuous process improvement, I'll go over that 'cause that's, we filled that hole finally and it's going very well. So those, those quick tea values, quality, integrity, community, teamwork, efficiency and accountability, we're working still to deploy those values in the organization and focus on them and talk about them more often so that they become part of the culture. And the new strategic plan had these five objectives. Assist county employees with professional growth and development, increase management and supervision skills, adopt a process improvement model and improve the organizational culture and communication. So let me just quickly run through some of the successes of those five.
Does it come online?
Yes.
Better improve efficiency with them?
Uh, no, but that's a good question. And I think that's really something we're, we're working at. You have different, uh, systems going on in each department for that. Some of them, uh, they, they have an open door and people feel comfortable talking directly, some of them don't. So some of them may, departments may have a suggestion box, uh, but we don't have a clearinghouse for it as a county and, and that's something to consider in the future. We also have some feedback loops too from not just employees but customers to, uh, I know, I don't know if they're still doing it, for a while the clerk's office had a customer encounter survey that they were using to get feedback, but, uh, that differs, there's not a consistent approach yet across departments. This is a good question, good thought. So for the professional growth and development strategy, action step, we've provided basic training in Word, Excel and PowerPoint and, you know, believe it or not, that's the tools that are used most frequently, so they go over very well. They're received very well. We're about to, uh, offer another set of classes to employees because this is what they spend an eighty, seventy, eighty, ninety percent of their day using these, uh, tools. And so if you only know a certain amount of those tools, then it makes you, you're not as effective as you could be. So we're gonna offer another set of those that we have in the past. The education assistance program that the board reinstated last year, over the last year and a half, we've been able to give twenty-one grants for assistance for, um, employees seeking further education, whether that's certifications, uh, addition, graduate level or undergraduate level classes. So that's, uh, the leadership team gets those monthly, that we'll see one to two applications a month. We'll look at them in that meeting and either approve them or send them back. But we've, uh, been able to use twenty-one, and I say, I wouldn't say twenty-one employees because some of that may be multiple semesters. So, uh, it's probably even closer to like fifteen individuals. But that's exciting and very well received and even the employees that don't receive that, don't use that, still appreciate the fact that it's offered and that, then they see themselves maybe using it in the future. So that's gone a long way. The increase in the management and supervisory skills, we've trained over a hundred employees now in high performance organizations through the three-day retreat. So that's a big commitment. And then we've added some, this high performance organization training to the Jackson Mojo, new employee orientation. And we're still looking at different ways that we can increase the supervision capacities for managers and department heads. Third one is adopting process improvement model. The successes here, we trained the first cohort of individuals. Out of them, we selected trainers and had that same consultant come in, train the trainers, and then those trainers trained the first cohort of county employees. And they're planning on their second cohort of county employees. So we've built this organizational capacity now to do it ourselves. So instead of somebody fishing for us, we've taught ourselves through somebody's taught us how to fish. And so now we can go out and teach others. And there's a CPI council that I think we've talked to you before and that's more about integrating the culture of continuous process improvement into the organization. Which is the next one, improving the organizational culture. Uh, the HBO sessions do a lot. One of the things we did this past year... One of the things we did this past year was budget sessions with county employees, and we went around to each building, invited whoever wanted to come in, and we got a lot of good questions, frank questions of us, and I think those would go well. But we still need to do a lot with that culture building. And then the last one is the improve overall communication in the organization. And we just wrapped up the communication plan. That's an internal communication plan that, maybe we can share that with the board on the end of the week report sometime. But that plan covers how we're going to use social media, email, these different tools on the left side for immediate, short-term media, intermediate, and long-term communication And then the last, but not least coming up, we've got, we're trying to implement that plan, so not enough to have it, you've got to actually do the things in there. And then we've got the fourth biennial employee survey coming up in the late winter, early spring. And that's a wrap-up of the Improve Work Environment Team.
Thank you. You mentioned the Education Assistance Program. I'm just curious, you don't need to be specific in your answer, but in general, were any of the applicants denied that request?
They haven't been denied yet, actually. What we've come across though, one of the requirements on the application is how involved are you in working with other departments or contributing to some of our workplace teams? And there's been just maybe one or two where they haven't had that involvement and they haven't tried to participate in the organization, the bigger organization. And so we've responded back to them saying, yes, we're going to approve this, but if we get to the point where we are at, maxed out our budget and we have to make decisions, we will likely not fund you again over somebody who is participating in it. And so we've had a couple people like that, but what we're finding is most of the applicants are people that are, that want to be a part of the future of the organization and they're furthering their education through it.
The additional education, is that tied to what they actually do rather than I'm going to get a law degree?
It is tied to what they do, and they actually have to explain how, on the application, how the classes and the, or the degree affect the workplace. Now, sometimes, you know, in the undergraduate courses, there's requirements you have to take just for, to meet the degree requirements that may not be directly linked to your classes, but we make sure that the program is aligned with something that's going to benefit the county.
This is just a wonderful process, and it's really interesting to me to see if people really feel like they are an important part of the organization to the point where they would be considered to be leadership and have gone through that process. It's just very interesting to me to see whether or not they would be considered to be for the next position in line, or are they being groomed for a position that would coincide with the growth and development of the county?
Yeah.
So, I mean, is this a process that we're just going through, or will people really be considered based on their skill sets and involvement?
Yeah, I think it's the latter, and I didn't mention the, what we call LIFT, and we've talked about it with you before, but what that stands for is Leadership Infrastructure for Tomorrow. And what we told department heads is that we don't care what position it is that they have. We want the people that are part of the future of the organization, what some people call the shining eyes, the, not glassy eyes, but shining eyes, and people that, that they have this potential to be the future leaders in the organization. So we meet with them quarterly, and we use that two-fold-one to extract ideas and the voice of the people kind of way, and then also to train them more and address more of these leadership skills and development. And then we've also been lately using it as a communication tool. Mike and I do these, you know, ask a question or what's the rumor mill around the county, and that those have been received very well too. The idea is that we're growing people in the organization. And Mike and I talk about this occasionally, you always want a healthy balance of having new injections, but yet also having people within, and that balance is kind of hard to find, but you want both, people to be able to come up and the new blood to be injected in.
Very interesting. I will be, even though I won't be here for a lot of it, but I will be watching to see if that is the true case. Because even as all of us are leaders on this board, we don't all get to move to leadership position because that's not what we think that we all are. Even though we've been elected to be so, that's not how it works. And so whether or not that'll be how it works within the leadership of the employees will be interesting. Thank you.
We have, I believe, one more item here. What we want to do is implement a new education session at, once a month at the study session. We recognize that not everyone here is familiar with the ins and outs workings of road construction and transportation, JDOT I should say, in particular. So Jerry's going to address each month, I told him, keep it under an hour, the, a particular topic of perhaps of interest that's been, he's received some email or communication on that month, or if not, something there, just something that's ongoing generic in JDOT. So this month, I believe it's given all the interest in signage, speed, speed signs, and how we go about creating speed limits and all that stuff, he's going to be dealing with that. Thank you.
Yeah, trust me, it won't be an hour, it's going to be 15 minutes like you told me.
Yeah.
Yes, because Commissioner Howell brought up a very interesting point, and I'll get to that here shortly on some of the things that, in the law that really don't make sense. So currently anyways, the way it's set up is speed limits can have a traffic control order issued in the following means, 25 miles an hour on all highways in a business district. So if you've got a business district, you can get a traffic control order for 25 miles an hour. In a public park, you can post it at 25 miles an hour unless you, the boards, because it's not a public road, they could, you know, choose to do something less than that if they wanted to, which many of them do like 15, but 25 miles an hour can be put in a public park. 25 miles an hour on highways, or parts of highways in the boundaries of a land planted on the Land Division Act of 1967, and that's the question that got brought up. If it was platted under the provisions of the 1967 Land Division Act, you can post it at 25 miles an hour. If it's platted back in 1935, '36, they didn't cover that in here, so you're not supposed to do it. Also the Condominium Act of 1978, so it's kind of a...
Jerry, is there any reasonable explanation that you might have, and I know it's not your legislation, but what's the difference? A subdivision's a subdivision if it's platted, one would think.
Yeah, and I sat through a class on this quite a while ago, and if my memory serves me correct, is that the Land Division Act is the difference, because that was in 1967. Before that, it was, they were just platted, you know, they were just plats. So they created a Land Division Act, and I don't know why they recognized that piece, but legislators recognized that the Land Division Act in this law, but they didn't recognize just plats.
No, that, really not what I'm asking, is there any functional difference between how a subdivision was planted in relation to speed limits?
There's, yeah, there's no difference.
Could something be replatted to the definition in 1967 by a township?
Yeah, you'd have to resubmit the plat to the state to get accepted. That's a good ques, I'm not sure, I mean...
I would think a township through the Governing Act of the Constitution would have the right to replat.
Yeah.
I would think the easier way would be just to ask for legislation to recognize both.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure of it, but sometimes you need something to stimulate legislation. Yeah. You know.
Yeah. Legislation is the way to fix it though, I mean, I'm not sure why they did it that way.
Thank you, Jerry.
25 miles an hour on a highway segment with 60 or more vehicular access points within a half a mile. So if you've got 60 more access points in that half mile, it can be posted at 25. It can be posted at 35 miles an hour if it's between 45 and 59. It can be posted at 45 miles per hour if there's 30 to the 44. And if there's less than that 30, then it's prima facie 55 miles an hour, and that's the case out there unfortunately. One of the other things that I wanted to talk about as well with that is that gravel roads currently do not have the latitude to have a speed study done, even put a speed limit on. There's legislation pending right now to do prima facie 45. However, the big problem that we're running into is that a gravel road can change in condition from one day to the next, just over a bad rainstorm and have rutting and potholes and stuff, and then you could drive safely 45 today and tomorrow you're barely doing 25 and being safe on the road. So the law does say that regardless of the posted speed limit, you still have to be driving to the road conditions. So it may be posted 55, but if the road's all tore up and it's in bad shape and you go off the road and you get in a wreck, and you just recognize that you were doing 55 and you should have been doing 35 because the road conditions are so poor, they have the ability to write you up for driving too fast for conditions. So it's a little sidebar on there. The same law that does the traffic control orders for the speed is also pulled in for our parking restrictions. So the road department does not have the latitude to put no parking signs out on the roads either without a traffic control order issued to us. So those are the two areas of signage that we have to have a traffic control order issued to us in order for us to put those signs out. Those are regulatory signs that we do not have the latitude just to put out as we want. There are advisory signs that are out there. So if you see an orange and black sign, those are advisory speed limit signs, those are done by the engineering department where we can put an advisory speed in a curve that says, all right, under the current conditions and the construction of the road, we're saying that this curve is safe to drive at 35 miles an hour. It's not, it's not a regulatory, they're not going to get wrote up for it, it's just our advisory saying you should probably take this curve up here at 35 because anything more than that, you could lose control of your vehicle. So there are the advisories, we can do that through our engineering side of it, so we can post those type of signs. The, the speed studies on the 85th percentile side of things is where a lot of people get upset about it. So when you have your committee that's set up and you're going to do a speed study on a road to evaluate what the speed limit should be on the road, they, they'll utilize an unmarked car and actually track the speeds of vehicles during the normal hours of, normally it's between eight and nine in the morning, and then we usually go back out between three and four, or four and five o'clock at night, and capture two different ones, and take the average speed in the 85th, we drop to 15, if you were going to just do 100 cars, you'd drop the top 15 speeders off the list, and that 85th car is your 85th percentile. I mean, it's 85, 85th percent of the actual speed is really what it is, but, so that is the recommended speed. You can vary from that, 5 miles an hour either direction. So if it comes in that the 85th percentile is 41 miles an hour, you can post to 35, they'd let you go that extra, and they let you go up to 45. They won't let you go any lower or any higher, they give you that 5 mile an hour latitude each side of that 85th percentile, but they like to keep it right at it, so most likely they would want to see a 40 mile an hour speed limit. But you, the township is now involved. Up until a few years ago, the township wasn't involved at all, it was just the state police and the road departments. Now the township can be involved in the process, they can solicit a request for a speed study done on the road. Prior to doing that though, the state police have made it very clear, and it's actually part of it, is that you agree on the speed study before it's done, that you're going to live with the results of it. So if you've got a road that's posted 45 miles an hour and you're thinking you want to drop it to 35, and this has happened, I saw it happen up in Traverse City, they did the speed study, the 85th percentile came in at 55. It went from 45 up to 55 instead of down to 35, which got the township really upset. So that's the, that's the catch, if it's already set there. The best thing that I try to let people know is if you really see a lot of people speeding in the road, it's, you're not going to get them to reduce the speed because that 85th percentile is obviously what people are feeling comfortable driving at, so it's hard to get it down. So it's, it's very prudent that everybody recognizes that that 85th percentile is the basis right, right now anyways on it.
So for clarification then, if the 85th percentile is the basis in which that determination is made, how much credibility, where does the access point system come in there as well? I mean, it's got to be a factor.
The access points come first.
Okay.
If there's, if you're outside of those access points, then you can request the survey to do the actual speed study to recognize the 85th percentile of setting the speed then on that road. So you may have five accesses on this section of road, but everybody's driving 35 miles an hour. 85th percentile comes in and says it is, you know, everyone's driving around 35 miles an hour, you post it at 35.
All right, and then the second question or direction for clarification is, an individual is requesting it. I'm hearing you say they must go through the township, that individual must contact their township, and it's the township that steps forward with this initiative.
It's one of the three entities. An individual requesting a speed study is not going to draw the attention to go out and do a speed study by the state police. I mean, that's one person along the road that's upset with the way people are driving that's not going to warrant them.
And most likely they just recently received a ticket, a speeding ticket, you know, throw that in there, because usually that's the other piece of it I'm finding.
You're right.
Uh-huh.
Jerry, where, where is it factored in if they're doing the 85th percentile variations in the road such as curves, hills, the fact that it's a dead-end street? Are those factored into that at all, number one?
Yes. If the, if the road doesn't have at least a half mile straight segment to be able to actually get a speed study done, they won't do it. So you won't get a, you won't get a speed limit on that road. What you'll get is advisory speeds on all those curves leading in and out is what you'll end up getting on the road itself. As far as, you know, if the road has a dead end on the end of it, the 85th percentile, if the road's a half mile long, the 85th percentile should come in 35, 40 miles an hour, because people really shouldn't be getting up to 55 miles an hour on a segment of road. Shouldn't be, I mean, I'm not saying you can't, but, so those normally... So those normally come in around thirty-five to forty-five because in the half mile, everybody that's driving on that dead end are normally people that live there. And they know they've got to slow down already, so they don't get up to fifty-five miles an hour.
Okay. And then the second part would be, you say there's a five mile per hour leeway. Who, who gets to decide that, the three entity committee?
Yes. And the catch on that is if they do not agree. So if one entity says, let's say it came in at forty, and one entity says we want it at thirty-five, and another one says we want to keep it at forty. If the three don't agree on that, the study's thrown out and it stays prima facie or whatever it was prior to the study. So you either all agree or it doesn't change. Yeah, actually, that's, that's the long and short. I think I might have taken more than fifteen, but...
Carl? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question involves, what about school zone areas? Is there a certain distance before it can, before the road can be considered a school distance? For instance, do you have to be within a half a mile from the school? Can you be within a mile from the school for it to be considered a school zone?
It has to be contiguous to the land that the school is sitting on. So if the school is sitting on that piece of property and there's students that are accessing the school from it, the superintendent of the schools puts the request in for the reduced speed and the hours of operation that it will be in effect. That's how, that's, that's the sidebar of it is the school superintendent can request that. But it has to be, the access to, the school has to be sitting on that road. Not a ball field or, you know, or something like that. It's actually the physical school itself.
Okay, thank you. Thank you on that.
It's kind of important to note, Jerry, I think you did, that in a school zone, that speed limit is only in effect during their hours of operation, correct?
Yeah. And it's actually the hours of operation with this, where the students are coming and going from school. So you'll see seven to nine in the morning and then two to four at night. They can't just start at seven in the morning and go all the way to five or six at night because the students aren't coming and going in the middle of the day either.
Jerry, I hate to get in a lot of what ifs, but I can think of a school we have in Columbia Township where there's a lot of Saturday morning activities, soccer and softball and quite a group of people. Would that law go into effect, would it stay in effect the hours of operation?
No.
So Saturday it would be revert to normal basic speed limits?
Yep.
Thank you. I want to bring up something I've been following through the legislature as well as through MTA. And that's the possibility, I realize that, that townships are not allowed to restrict for oil traffic or heavy equipment traffic on their roads personally. But are we, as a county, have an opportunity to franchise our county to make sure we get our roads properly maintained and taken care of if they're out running this heavy oil equipment or heavy drilling equipment up and down it? And how can we protect ourselves from over damage from that heavy equipment?
The only recourse that we have is to track the physical damage to that company and go after them for the repairs. During frost laws, we can make them bond outside of that, no. We do have some oil companies that have been stepping up, like Lad Road was paid for and built and put the enzymes on by the oil company. They recognized that road was getting damaged and they stepped up and paid for it.
Jerry, with Jefferson Road being repaved, I was wondering about, during the M-50 construction between Napoleon and Brooklyn, a lot of truck traffic learned a shortcut down Jefferson Road. We now have Jefferson Road repaved and it's looking like a very nice job. But to protect that road, can it, could it be restricted to local deliveries, local truck deliveries only, or?
No.
No?
Once it's, once federal monies have been spent on it, it's open to truck traffic. If you restrict it, if, you could take a vote and say we're going to restrict it to truck traffic. Once you do that, all federal monies that were put into that road prior to that, you have to pay them back.
Okay, thank you.
Don't do that to me, please. Yep. Oh, the only other thing on the speed, just so everybody knows, I think you guys are well aware of it though, is during frost laws, those trucks are restricted to thirty-five miles per hour countywide. So that's the only other side of it, but... Well, even Class A, their speed can be restricted to thirty-five miles an hour. Normally, if, if the road's capable of holding it up at fifty-five, we leave them alone. But they, they can be if, if we so choose, but we don't, but...
Any other items? You? Any other public comment? Seeing none? Commissioner comments? John?
I just want to take a quick moment, Jerry, and thank you very much. Those were very impressive reports today.
Any other commissioner comments? If you haven't been, get to the fair, spend some money, it's a good time.
Everybody here should participate in the pedal track Saturday at noon.
And the monster trucks are tomorrow, are tonight.
And I'll be, I'll be soliciting judges for next year's pie eating contest, so you can all expect a phone call. Actually, they've segregated Brad because he picks and chooses which pies he likes. Yeah, he has a, yeah, so... Any other comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned.